All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call to order the City Council redevelopment agency meeting with City San Carlos for July 13th, 2009. If you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Second item, any changes to the order of the agenda this evening? Have counsel, okay, move on. Item three, report from closed sessions, Mr. Rubens.
Direction given, no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. Number four, council communications and announcements, Mr. Lewis.
Thanks for remembering, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Grisilli.
Mr. Ma.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to remind folks that there is an open house community outreach regarding the new county jail that will be July 22nd.
Proposed.
Well, there is, okay, well, a proposed jail. And although we still have convicts we need to lock up, so they're not going away. But that is going to happen on the 22nd. Would encourage people to, if you have an opinion, please show up. As Brown Act matter, I'm going to tell everybody on the dais that I will be there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Grocott.
The only item I had is, I guess this would be the place to mention this, is there was the grand jury report on the SBWMA RFP process, and I know I haven't received a copy through the city of that report, and I'm wondering when we might receive that and how we might be able to have input on that from the council. Seems that we should. And I felt a little concerned because I know the bond issue is on their agenda for their next meeting, and I think even their response to the grand jury is on their agenda. And I feel like, I don't know what other councils are doing up and down the peninsula, but we were certainly involved in that process as a council. It seems we should be involved in the response given to the grand jury.
Mr. Weiss, is it possible to get copies of that? Or, I guess the grand jury sent the letter to the SBWMA board or to the...
That's correct, but it's my understanding that they now have distributed perhaps just as of today to us. And so if they have, then we will, I haven't seen it delivered to us personally, but if they have, then we will be obligated to work up a response, just as always. So we will do that within the timeframes permitted.
Right. Okay, so, but, well, I'm just curiosity, I mean, the SBWMA is going to give a response.
On the 23rd, I believe they're going to consider this issue, which is before our next council meeting.
So they'll be writing a response, but are all the different cities going to write responses to?
If it was distributed to all of the cities, normally they ask for a response.
Okay, fine, I just want, I was just asking the process, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, regarding the bond issue, which is on their next meeting, is there a way perhaps we could, I don't know how we would take this issue up, we can't do it right now because it's not on our agenda, but if we could somehow give direction to Mr. Moore on the bond issue, that's coming up before we meet again as a council, is it not?
Yeah, let me make a couple comments to emphasize or to underscore. Mr. Weiss said, "We did get the letter today addressed to the city." So it's my assumption that all 12 SBWMA agencies got a similar letter from Judge Mirum, which means that we have until the first meeting in October to respond to the grand jury. In talking to some of the other agencies in the SBWMA, it's their desire to read the SBWMA response first before their agencies respond, and so I would imagine we would do that. In fact, we've already taken the liberty of scheduling action for San Carlos's response the first meeting in September. As far as the bonds, actually, as I recall, the grand jury's report, they didn't get into the bonds. They asked a lot of questions. The two areas that the grand jury does talk about in their report, one is the RFP process itself, and the SBWMA staff and executive committee is preparing response to that. And the second area they get into is the question of whether or not elected officials should be on the board. So they did explore many, many areas, but the only two that, as I recall, that they talked about were the RFP process and the board composition, not the bonds.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Grocott?
I believe that's it.
Okay. Mr. Royce?
Yes, two items. First is with summer, one of my favorite events always kicks up after the Fourth of July, and we already had one, our summer concert series on Friday evenings from 6:00 till 8:00 PM in Burton Park. Gina Archibald from Park and Rec does a great job in organizing this event. It's the 19th year, we get more than 1,000 people, it's free, we get seniors, we get kids, we have a new playground to play on, and we always bring in some new tunes. So I welcome you to, don't worry about who's playing, but the next five Fridays, we will be there, summer concerts in Burton Park at 6:00 PM every Friday until the middle of August. Second item, just like to maybe ask the mayor of some advice here. On our last meeting, there was an item in which we talked about the service elements of our waste program, and an item that I brought up towards the end of that agenda item was an interest that I had in reviewing our billing cycle in which the SBWMA for businesses and of course, multi-residential apartments, they bill like other bills where you receive the service over the month and you pay at the end of the month. But it seemed like four or five years ago with the conversion from BFI to Allied, residents were beginning to be actually charged for the quarter in advance, so that a billing in April, you would be actually paying for May, June, and July. I thought there was some interest when I made that presentation. I know the mayor and both, and council member Grocott made some comments, Omar Dent, but I'd like to kind of just resurface that. I asked our city manager and didn't think that there was an action item, but would like to kind of poll or just get some flavor from the council if council felt that we should pursue the issue. And what the issue is, is making a recommendation to the SBWMA to basically, to go to a quarterly billing might be a good idea, but to basically have some flexibility in moving the payment date due in the middle of that cycle rather than totally prepaying three months of garbage bills. And so with that...
Mr. Rubens, we can't, of course, I mean, I just want to make sure we do this properly.
This was a report, not an agenda item, of course.
Right. Do we need to make an agenda item to discuss this issue then?
You would have to put that on a future agenda. Reporting is okay.
Yeah, okay. No, I understand what he did was fine. I just want him, for the next step, I'm just saying, put it on, so if people wanted to put it on to agenda, is there interest in the council to put it on an agenda, as an agenda item, or not?
Sure.
Okay. There's consensus to do that, so.
Can I update the council on this item? We did a couple things in response to that, and actually, I also have an update on another item I can mention to you as well on that topic. On the billing, we did mention, or I did mention at the last SBWMA meeting, that the council, at least one council member, had interest in exploring different billing possibilities. And I asked the board if any of them were interested, and there was not interest. However, notwithstanding that, we are, as part of our negotiations with Recology, we are asking them both for what the impact on the rates would be if we went to a 30-day in advance cycle, and also to, as the vice mayor suggests tonight, a 45-day cycle. So when this item comes back to you, which again, we're projecting the first meeting in September for final action on their franchise, we will have cost estimates for you on both of those scenarios. In our preliminary discussions with Recology, we believe that those will increase the rates somewhat, but as of tonight, I don't have numbers for you yet. I want that will be. The other thing I wanted to mention to you just in passing, again, is an update from your discussion last time. The council expressed interest in the 20-gallon automated container, either having a 20-gallon sticker on the outside of the bigger container with the insert. That has been agreed to already, so we're good there. But I'm pleased to tell you that working with SBWMA staff at Recology, believe it or not, we have located a vendor who does indeed make a 20-gallon automated container. There is one now. They are not SBWMA, I mean, not Recology supplier. However, we are negotiating now to see if there is a way to, at least in the San Carlos deal, I mean, this may not necessarily affect all 12 cities, but at least in San Carlos, that that option may indeed be available to our residents. So again, we'll have more for you on that in September.
Okay.
Through the chair, just clear...
Yeah, Mr. Weiss.
Is it still the council's desire, after having heard that update, to put this on the next council agenda for discussion with respect to our representation to the SBWMA board? As Brian indicated, it's been mentioned there, there wasn't much support. He could mention it again if the council chose, but that would be the thing that the council would decide at a subsequent meeting if we put it on the agenda. So I just want clarification as to whether or not the council wants this item on the next agenda or not.
Okay, what do you guys want to do?
My only concern is we've had a significant level of conversation about something that should be on at least a public agenda, if nothing else, is an update, so public has a chance to give us some feedback on it. That's my only thing, so I would say we should.
All right, put it on the next agenda, okay? All right, thank you, Mr. Weiss. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, I have no communications or announcements this evening. Number five, presentations. 5A, pardon me, recognition of and proclamation to Black Mountain Properties, our 21st certified green business in San Carlos.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of council, Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager. As you know, from time to time, the council and the mayor recognize certified green businesses. These are firms in San Carlos and throughout San Mateo County that have gone through an exhaustive process, an 11-page self-assessment process. They have changed their recycling programs, proved their water, reduced their water consumption, and in many cases, redone their electrical systems and relamping. Tonight, we honor our first landlord, Black Mountain Properties, and I think what's of note here is that prior to this award, two of the tenants of Black Mountain Properties, namely the Optimal Fitness Center and Electric Green Showroom, have previously won certification. So it's very gratifying to see now we have a landlord, and hopefully, there'll be many more in this process. So I'd invite the mayor to come down and to give an award to the Black Mountain property folks, and my understanding is that Tony Bullock and Jim Zanotti are here tonight from Black Mountain to receive those awards.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. I'm going to hand these to you first. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations. Needless to say, this is a very important thing that we do in San Carlos, and we're still ahead, I think, of the curve of all the other cities in the county. And I think it's terrific, especially for a landlord to step up. I mean, it's good for any business, but when the landlords step up, I mean, I think that gives an example to other folks saying, hey, we can do this. It's all doable. And there's nothing but congratulations to you guys and the other 20 that we have, and hopefully, we'll get another 20 by next year, if not even more. So it's a great program, it's a great green program, and it's something that's the future. So thanks again, guys. Congratulations. Thanks a lot. Okay. Five is done. We move on to six, public comment. Persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the post of the agenda may do so now. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. So I have a couple of speaker slips, and if there's some other folks, we certainly listen to them. First slip I have is Pat Bell.
Pat Bell, San Carlos. This goes back a couple of meetings, when you were talking about the Parks and Rec Foundation and whether to put a lot of things under one umbrella. For what it's worth, I wouldn't give a dime to something called the Parks and Rec Foundation, ever. If special needs needed something, I would give to that. There are probably other programs I would give to, but if you put it all under one umbrella and it's called Parks and Rec, you can take me off the mailing list.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bell. The other speaker slip I have is David Crabbe, or Crabby, I'm not sure how to say that, sir, I'm sorry.
Hi, David Crabbe, 289 Crestview. It's interesting, I just followed a green building, or a green business award. I want to talk about Vista Park. Vista Park, a year and a half ago, we were at a great ceremony where they dedicated, they rededicated the park for having replanted it and cleaned it up and all, whatever. And it was a great thing, and we have it on our letterhead, and it's, you know, it's green. Have you been out to the park lately, any of you? It looks like crap. It has not been maintained, the city has not been maintaining it. San Carlos Green, occasionally, will have a weekend where they'll ask volunteers to come up for a Saturday afternoon. I've volunteered a couple of times. I live just down the road from the park, go through it all the time. But go up and look at it. It does not look very beautiful. There's a lot of weeds growing up, the pathways are covered with weeds, the grasses have grown, it needs to be weed whacked. And I don't know what the problem is, it's always been the often of the city in terms of park and rec, and it still seems to remain that way. And the park and rec folks come out maybe once a month, it seems like to me anyway, I may have missed them, but they try, but it's gotten ahead of them. They just can't keep up with it anymore. And so I'm really making a strong concerted effort that, let's look at that park and start getting it back together again. You know, it's supposed to be native planting, and they say, well, native planting, well, that's maintenance-free. Well, it's maintenance-free maybe after it's been established for five or 10 years, but in the first few years, you have to actually put some work into it. And if you want to see what a native garden can look like that is maintained, you can just walk down the street about 300 or 400 feet to my front yard, which is 289 Crestview. I have a native garden in my front yard. And right next to me is a fellow who's put natives in front of his place, and we both maintain them, and they look pretty nice. I mean, it's not perfect, but it's, you know, comparison of the park. So anyway, please do something about Vista Park.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe, for your comments. Mr. Weiss, did you talk to our park and rec folks and...
Take a look at it.
See what we can, if there's a solution, hopefully. Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
Through the chair, it's a great community service option. All the high schools and junior high schools around here, they need community service time. For those of you at home, my son did 20 hours of weeding up in that park when he was in need a community service hour. So let's get the word out to the schools, I'm serious, there's a workforce there to be had.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anyone else wishing to speak, a public comment, items not on the post of the agenda? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request. Specific items be removed for separate action. Gentlemen?
I'd like to remove item H.
Item H, okay. Anything else? All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of consent calendar, items 7A through G and I through K.
Second? It's been moved and seconded on to approve items 7A through G and items 7I through K. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Ma.
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes.
Senator Grisilli.
Yes, okay, thank you. And 7H will be discussed after our new business. Okay. All right, moving on. Reports to council. Mr. Weiss, any reports to council today?
We have nothing additional to report at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, item nine, public hearing, consideration of a resolution approving the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, stormwater charges for fiscal year 09-10. And it's been noted here that staff recommends we continue this to July 27th? That staff's recommendation?
That's the recommendation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, move to continue item 9A to the July 27, 2009 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Excuse me.
Before, just for protocol purposes, before you continue it, it might be appropriate to ask if anyone's here to, since it is a public hearing item.
All right, good point, Mr. Rubens. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item 9A or 9B? Because 9B will be a similar situation. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rubens. I didn't have to open or close the public hearing?
You've opened the public hearing by calling the item.
Okay, should I close it now?
You shouldn't close it, you should just, motion to continue.
Just want to make sure I do this right. That's what you're there for. All right, it's moved and seconded to postpone, or continue this item rather, until July 27th. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion passes. 9B, consideration of a resolution approving wastewater charges for fiscal year 2009-2010. This is also recommended by staff to be continued to July 27th. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on that item? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, move to continue item 9B to the July 27, 2009 meeting.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue item 9B to the July 27, 2009 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Is that an aye or an r?
Aye.
Like a pirate.
Moving on.
Keep things light.
Keep things light. You have a pirate movie coming out?
You have 10 more.
All right, item 10, new business. Item 10A, consideration of authorizing Mayor Grisilli to send a letter on behalf of the city council regarding the civil grand jury report on employee salaries and benefits in cities in San Mateo County. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As the council will recall, the city's practice when we receive a letter from the civil grand jury and the presiding judge is to draft a response from the mayor, and then the council reviews both the draft letter and the attachments and provides any comment, and then the final document is forwarded to the presiding judge. This particular item is something that the council and the city staff have been working on for several years. The city has received a lot of public attention in the media and praise for its efforts to reduce employee costs and benefits over the last three years. This report is interesting of note because in several places, the report from the civil grand jury actually cites, and in some cases praises, the city of San Carlos for being a leader in this area. In the report, what we did is we reproduced in the attachment some documents from the grand jury itself. So for example, attachment two is actually statistics on full-time staffing by agency, not compiled by the city of San Carlos, but rather compiled by the grand jury. And I think it's worth noting that because of our cuts in staffing over the last 10 years, we now find ourselves ranked 15 of 20 cities in the county. There are only five cities, Half Moon Bay, Atherton, Colma, Woodside, and Portola Valley, who have fewer staff than in the city of San Carlos, and we now find ourselves trailing cities including Belmont, Brisbane, East Palo Alto, and Hillsborough, who in some cases have 1/3 to 1/8 the population of San Carlos. I'd also draw your attention to attachment one, which is a table that staff put together on a number of the items both that the grand jury suggested other cities follow us in, and also frankly, some of these items are things that grand jury didn't even bring up, cuts that we've made. And what you see in that table, we've done it by employee group, is there 11 areas of suggested or implemented salary and benefit cuts. Three groups in the city, the management, the police management group and confidential have implemented all 11, and that includes reductions in future retirement pension, reductions in future retiree health costs, reductions for some of the groups in current retiree health, including elimination of that program in the management, confidential, and police management for new hires, wage freezes, furloughs, equity adjustments, vacation caps, et cetera. Tonight, we would be interested in council's comments on both the draft letter and the attachment, and then again, once we have your suggested changes and comments, we'll work with the mayor on preparing a final response to the grand jury. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or leave it to the council for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions or comments for Mr. Moore?
For Mr. Moore? I don't think for Mr. Moore, I've got some for us.
Okay, okay, thank you. Comments on the letter or questions, Mr. Lewis?
No.
Okay, Mr. Ma.
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Royce?
Sure. Actually, yes, I thought the mayor's letter, I think, is a good draft. Also, I think it's really important for the citizens of San Carlos to recognize that the staff and council have been fairly aggressive in what they've done to reduce employee costs. And when you look at over the last 10, 10 years on minimal staffing, hiring, actually, we actually come down with headcount, we reduce benefit rates, we have employees sharing, we increase the retirement age. There are four pages here, and I really recommend citizens to go to the staff report and read the supplemental four pages to the mayor's letter. It talks about everything that we've done. The only interest that I have and like to kind of share with council is I don't like saying the word "done." I think we need to keep doing. You know, whenever I would have a peer or an employee say, well, they're done, let's send the letter in, I think this grand jury report is more longer term than just responding and saying, hey, we've done a great job and we're actually done. There are three items that I would like to consider even to a point of maybe including in the letter, or at least recognizing as a council, as we move forward, we will continue to recognize the three items. The first is that any labor negotiations from this point on, we continue to refer to the actual grand jury report. There are very specifics in there on a lot of ideas on controlling employee costs, matching it to revenue growth, and I think that over the next one or two or three years, we still have a job to continue to manage our employee costs and manage our revenue and manage our budget and our bottom line. So I want to make sure, especially as it relates to any future negotiations, that we keep this paper in our package. Secondly, it does point out a couple of items that I've spoken about over the past year that I think are very important that the letter does not address, but the grand jury report does. And it includes partnering with partners, other cities, and subcontracting. There are areas in partnering where, you know, we have an employee base that's down to about 111 people. There are a lot of other cities that are small, there are functions like payroll or IT or other functions that are replicated in all these cities. And I think that there can be, even though we've done some partnering, for example, dispatch with police, with Menlo Park, I think there can be some very shared responsibilities where cities work together, do a much better job, make more investment, but actually save cost. And the second area, again, on the contracting, I think it's really important for our managers to realize it's service that they perform, and doesn't make sense for them to perform it or to have someone from the outside do it. You know, we contract people for our red lights, for our changing our light bulbs, for our street sweeping, but there are also areas that we have significant resources in, and we really need to really find out what our true cost of providing those services are, and always ask the question, is there a better way and a cheaper way to do it? And there are some level of subcontracting always, I think, makes sense to look at that area. So that's the second area, the partnering and the contracting. And the last area is, there is a recommendation, it's not a requirement, but there is one strong recommendation that talks about having a public forum. I've always been spoken of being, having town halls, having meetings, sometimes a council meeting's not the right format. But I think our people, our citizens of San Carlos are very interested in employee cost. I think there's a lot of misnomers out there, a lot of misunderstandings, and I think we've done a really good job. I think we could continue, I think Mark's done some good jobs on his presentations regarding the revenue measure and what we've done, but I would like to continue and probably have some sort of public forum over the next three to four months that addresses what the actual grand jury is asking us to do here. So in summary, negotiations, partnering and contracting, and public session, I'm not sure to the mayor, maybe what format to include in your letter, I think your letter's fine the way it is, but I would like to get some input on continuing the march, continuing our attention on controlling costs for our city of San Carlos.
So I'm a little confused, but I'm always a little confused. Do you want me to, do you want some of this in the letter or not in the letter? Are we just, that was just some comments?
So I guess to keep my recommendation clear, yeah, I would prefer that we talk in the letter, these are additional things that we are doing, that we, from a city council, are committing to the grand jury to do.
Yeah, committing is always something, I'm always concerned about committing, I mean, only because you lock yourself into something specific, and, I mean, in general, I think it's great on some of your comments, but I'm just always worried about saying, when you go up to the next negotiation, saying, by the way, we're committed to do it this way, you've already sort of voted out. But anyway.
Can I just add a point, Mayor, through the chair? Item number five in the attachment is our draft attempt to get at some of the comments that Vice Mayor made about contracting in and contracting out. As I'm sure the council knows, we've kind of done it on a...
when you go up to the next negotiation, saying, by the way, we're committed to do it this way, you've already sort of voted out. But anyway.
Can I just add a point, Mayor, through the chair? Item number five in the attachment is our draft attempt to get at some of the comments that Vice Mayor made about contracting in and contracting out. As I'm sure the council knows, we've kind of done it on a case-by-case basis. For example, we used to do street sweeping in-house, and now it's contracted out. On the other hand, we've had functions like some of the staff and planning and public works that used to be contracted out, and now it's contracted in. So we do do it on a case-by-case basis, and that is described at the bottom of Page 3 and the top of Page 4, but certainly the council could look at that wording and, you know, adjust it as needed.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, well, why don't we get everybody's comments, and then we can try to figure out if we want to change specifics on this or not. Mr. Grocott?
So my comments are, in some regards, in some cases, same as or similar to Randy's. I also took note that the grand jury report makes a point of these public involvement, holding a public hearing to, if nothing else, inform the public on the things that the grand jury learned about when they looked at all these issues. I think, you know, we just spent a lot of time doing a bunch of town hall meetings that the city manager managed or took care of regarding the revenue measure and where we are with our budget and revenues and so forth. Why not for this kind of thing? And actually, when I go back to our council retreat, that's the kind of thing I was asking for, that if we're going to talk about revenue measures and our budget, we also need to talk about what 70% plus or minus is our cost and why they are what they are and what we're doing with our expenses in that regard. So I could see holding some public hearings on these issues. And related to that also, I had some recommendations about how we go about doing negotiations, and the grand jury report talks about this, something to counterbalance the way negotiations are conducted with our employee groups. Because the way it happens now, the public is pretty much unaware of anything going on until we're all completed and finished, and then we report out from closed session on what those items are and what we decided. And I think we need to look at this issue more critically, and what I would recommend is that we, similar to what this says here, is that the first volley by a labor group should be in a public hearing, so the public can hear what it is that's being asked for. And then we can go into closed session, maybe not at that meeting, but at the next meeting or whatever, and negotiate. When we come out with the final, that final agreement, I'd call it a draft agreement at that point, we could accept, just like we do with, I think, with municipal code. When we change the municipal code, we introduce it, and then it's there for 30 days, and that gives the public the chance to look at that code, see what we're doing, comment to us, write us letters or emails if they wish to, and possibly change our minds on some of the details of it. And I think that's what we should be doing with labor negotiations, so that the public is more aware of how we pay our employees, what the benefits are, and so on and so forth.
Could I just interject for just one quick question? Mr. Rubens, isn't there state labor codes that, I'm not disagreeing necessarily with the concept, but that prohibit things like that from happening?
There are some codes that constrain your ability to deal in open session about labor contracts, and it's something I could look into for you, certainly.
Okay, well, that'd be good to do that. I think that'd be a good point to see what you actually can and can't do, because there are, I know, I think there are some specific rules and regulations on what can, how you negotiate as opposed to how you do it in public or private. So if you would do that, Mr. Rubens, that'd be great.
Yeah, one more thing. If I, go ahead.
It might be part of our response then, because that is in this report, at number five of the report, under increasing public involvement by, A, holding public hearings before initiating closed session negotiations to counterbalance strong union pressure in city council elections, while, so on and so forth. And it also talks about making, placing the MOUs as a current agenda item after two weeks of making them public and invite discussion in a public arena.
I have no problem with what someone recommends, but they may not have had an attorney writing when they wrote that thing, so I just want to make sure we do it right. So.
We'll look into that.
And could we hold off on sending the letter until we've looked into it and respond to it?
Well, the response to the letters, I think it's due in September, and since you don't have any meetings in August, you will have to keep an eye on the clock. The other thing I was going to mention in Items 8 and 9 in the draft response, it does allude, as Councilman Grocott alludes to, the fact you do have a retreat coming up, and so some of these suggestions, such as the public forum that he mentioned, you could indeed put some of those things on in the next six months strategic plan if the council, you know, wishes.
Yes, I would like to do that.
I have no problem.
Or at least discuss it at our.
I have no problem discussing it, as long as, again, Mr. Rubens has a chance in the next 30 days to take a look at what we can and can't do. Because like I said, I don't have any trouble with people recommending anything, but I just want to make sure we do it properly, because there are a lot of laws out there.
And I had a comment or a question. You know, the thing I noticed about this grand jury report, and indeed, as Mr. Royce said, we've tackled some of these issues. However, at the very beginning of the report, what it talks about, let me turn to that page, in the very front, is, so I'm looking at the summary, this page here, it talks about cost containment measures and stopping the escalation of employee costs, not just, you know, tweaking around the edges, if you will, but really stopping the escalation and turning it around. And I'm not so sure that that's what we've done. We've, like I say, we've made some changes, but we haven't really stopped the escalation. And that's what this is asking for, and I don't see us really addressing that in the letter.
I tend to disagree with you. I think we have stopped the escalation, at least in future situations. For benefits, we certainly have.
For benefits.
You know, and for new employees, we have. Now, you can make a case for the other side of the issue, but I think we have made a step, more, way more steps than some of the other cities on the peninsula have even woke up to the situation. But again, that's a matter of opinion, and certainly, you know, we could be on different sides of it.
I guess then we are.
Well, I'm not saying we are. I'm just saying it's one man's opinion.
Here it is in the, just in the title, that's what I was looking for, reversing the upward trajectory. When I read reversing, that means, you know, right now it's doing this. Reversing means turning it down or at least making it go horizontal or something. Understanding that, you know, when everything else in the market is having an increase in employee costs in the whole market, private sector and public sector is increasing, I get, you would expect employee costs to go up. But right now, what we're seeing is, you know, drops in wages and salaries. I brought an article tonight for later on that talks about exactly that. So I just want to make sure that we're, I know a lot of work was put into this, so I don't want to just, you know, roll over on it and pass it out the door.
Appreciate it.
I guess the way, you know, I read letters, it's not like our job is done, and that's the only, I think, tonally, both of you guys are saying, hey, you know, we want to give the impression our job is done. And that wasn't the impression that I necessarily got from the letter. I would personally be completely, you know, if we want to put in language of continuing effort, and maybe we can put a couple of discussion subjects on, so there's some issues of protocol and process that we might want to review how we do them for the future. I think those are good discussions to have, and a good language in here, continuing effort to reverse some of those upward trajectory of costs could be good language to put in the letter. But I certainly didn't read this as, hey, we're already doing great, our job is done. I think we're on the road, perhaps better than many cities in the county, and we can continue to do a better job. I'm not sure anybody would argue with that.
Well, I would, through the chair, I would agree with what Mr. Lewis said, and that was Randy's point, too, is that I think.
Adding language for continuing effort.
We need some language that talks about, you know, continuing the effort. We're not finished.
And it could be general, I think.
Yeah, I have no, so consensus would be that we would add some language to show the continuing effort, and then we're going to be looking into the, Mr. Rubens is going to be looking into the other item. Are we going to hold this letter then until August or July?
I was just going to say, the dilemma we have here is that your first meeting in August is dedicated to the general plan, your second meeting is the strategic plan. So we were thinking that ideally you would approve something either at this meeting or the second meeting in July. So we could bring it back. And I guess the other thing I would run by you to see, we're just talking about your, we've heard three of you now talk about, we've made progress, but we want, it's a continuing effort. I'm thinking that would go in the mayor's cover letter, if that sounds right.
Yes.
I think that's very doable.
Okay. What is the consensus of the council? We want to hold this up, or we want to send it out, or what do we want to do?
I'm happy to approve it and trust that staff and mayor will work together, make the adjustments as we spoke about and include them.
I concur.
I concur with that. Okay, just, we made some notes that you gentlemen, because I didn't take any notes, I assume you did?
We did. I think the primary thing that we heard was to recognize this is an ongoing effort. I would indicate that. I mean, we've made the progress we've made to date without a grand jury report. I mean, this is stuff that we've done, one, because we felt it was correct, and two, because we were needing to do it, given our financial constraints.
Through the chair, one more comment, just to echo Vice Mayor Royce, saying if the public would take a look at some of the things in the grand jury report, I think it's important and pertinent to our discussion maybe later tonight. In cities within about 4,000 or 5,000 population of San Carlos in the county, you know, Burlingame, 258 employees. Now, you can argue there's fire included, but I think that's arguably 20 or 30 personnel. So 200, we have 111 employees. Burlingame, 258 employees. Foster City, Menlo Park, 244 employees. Foster City, 213 employees. Milbrae, 136. Belmont, 135. San Carlos, 111. When we talk about a budget issue and a budget shortage and threat to services and programs in San Carlos, I think this gives pretty good perspective on what the city has done to date and how hard we've worked, and how low a staffing level we have for the services we provide. I just wanted to say, if you take a look at the report, it's in here from the grand jury. Thank you.
Through the chair. I respect what the city manager said, that we've made some effort, and we should, you know, we've all agreed we'd do the ongoing language. I think some of the usefulness of this also, though, is what Mr. Royce pointed out, and it's also a reason, as Mr. Lewis said, for the, I think the public should look at this. And I think we should have a public, some public hearings on it and talk about it and look at these issues, because there's a lot in here. And one of the things I found of interest reading it is you can compare, yeah, we're mentioned, but Hillsborough is mentioned for doing, you know, health savings accounts. There's other ideas that are in here. You can look and compare yourself in certain ways. It's not completely thorough. It admits that it couldn't be completely thorough on every city, but it does give a lot of perspective and adds to our perspective, and I think Mr. Royce is right. This can be useful as we move forward. We can see ideas that other cities have tried and negotiated with their employees, things that save money, and, you know, that work. So it's a useful document.
Well, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing situation, there's no question. It's not the end-all, be-all tonight, that's for sure. Okay? Any other comments? All right. We'll revise the letter then and get that out. 10B, presentation of results of the public opinion poll of San Carlos, registered voters conducted by True North Research on city services and a potential revenue measure. That's yours? All right, let's do it. This looks more. All right. Mayor, members of council, as you know, for the last several months, we've been giving you periodic updates on the city's project to explore a potential revenue option. Go ahead. Mr. Moore, what is that date there?
That's an old date, all right.
So what does it mean? Somebody just didn't proofread this? Is that basically it?
No, it's, my guess is it's got an automatic date here, and so it's on the machine.
Okay, so somebody didn't proofread the slide, is my point.
No, I think, I think what Dr. McClarny is saying is that that field might say system date, which means the computer connected to this is.
That's fine. I just want to make sure everybody understands, we didn't do this four years ago.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, anyway, so we've been working on this project since last August, when the city council approved a project for the city to work, continue working with True North Research and Tramatola. As the council mentioned earlier, the previous agenda item, we've done some community workshops with over 145 people in May. We've also done some mailings. We had a web survey, and now we have done a scientific phone survey. And so tonight, we have with us Dr. Tim McClarny, PhD from True North Research, and also Charles Heath from Tramatola LLC. They'll walk you through the highlights of this phone survey and answer any questions you might have about it. And then in the subsequent agenda item, the city manager and the city attorney will talk to you about potentially putting a revenue measure on the ballot. So with that, let me turn over to Dr. McClarny.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We're a company that specializes in working with public agencies, primarily cities, in using survey research to develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities that they serve. Tonight's presentation is the highlights of the survey that we recently conducted of San Carlos voters. There's a lot more information in the full report than we'll be able to go through here this evening, but this is going to provide a good overview of the results. And as I go through this presentation, I certainly welcome any questions from council as we go or at the end, whichever is your preference. So with that, I will just right-click on the mouse here. Okay, there we go. Before I talk about the results, it's probably worth taking a moment to review what the purpose of the study was, as well as how we went about conducting the study. This is what we call a revenue measure feasibility survey, and the two overarching questions are, first of all, is it feasible to put a revenue measure on an upcoming ballot? And by feasible, I mean, does it have a reasonable chance of success if you, as a council, were to vote to place it on the ballot? And then secondly, if the answer to that first question is yes, we do see feasibility, how would you go about structuring or packaging this measure in a way that it's well-aligned with your community's priorities and needs and sensitivities, and is optimally positioned to receive a supportive vote on a particular ballot? Toward that end, we assessed a number of things in this poll. We wanted to get a measure of support today, as it sits, for both a UUT as well as a sales tax measure. We wanted to understand sensitivity to tax rates, in particular with the UUT. So as you fluctuate that UUT tax rate, what does that do to voters' willingness to support that type of a measure? We wanted to understand what types of improvements and projects voters are most interested in funding. This would be a general tax, so it would go into the general fund, council would have discretion how to spend those monies. At the same time, we wanted to understand, from a voter's perspective, which of these projects and programs and services they would most like to see funded with these additional revenues, should it be placed on a ballot and be successful. Also, we want to expose voters to arguments on both sides of this issue. Should council choose to place a measure on a ballot, there will be an election cycle during which some people will say positive things about this measure, and there may be opponents of the measure. For this to be a feasibility study, we needed to expose respondents to both sides of that debate, so we could understand not only where are they today, but also where are they likely to be at the end of an election cycle in terms of their support for a measure. Methodology, and this is just an overview of how we went about conducting the study. This was a telephone survey. We did the interviews between June 13th and June 24th of this year, not November 2005. We spoke with 600 likely November 2009 voters, and by that, I mean, these are individuals who, based on their voting history and some other demographics, we anticipate would actually cast a ballot in the November 2009 election. Because we were looking at both a UUT and a sales tax as options, and we wanted to give both of those mechanisms an equal playing field in terms of looking at the support levels for each, we used what's known as a split sample. And this is where we took our 600 interviews, and we divided them into And this is where we took our 600 interviews, and we divided them into 300 representative sub-samples. So we had 300 individuals in sample A, let's call it, and this, those 300 individuals are representative of that likely November 2009 electorate. We did the same thing with a separate 300 sample. And in essence, we conducted two surveys at the same time, one which was focused on the UUT measure, one which was focused on the sales tax measure. The reason we did that was because research has shown, again and again, that if you try and present a single respondent with two different versions of a ballot measure, number one, it can cause confusion. Number two, whatever measure you introduce second receives an artificially low level of support in the poll. Why? Because you've just spent time talking about one particular measure, and now you're shifting gears to a second measure. We've seen it happen time and time again. And so when you're considering two alternative revenue measures, you want to actually use a split sample, so that they only receive one version or another. We assigned voters to each of those samples on a random basis. And one of the questions that has come up and has been asked is, well, why do we do that? Why can't we let a respondent choose, for example, which option that they want to support? One of the reasons for that is that's not a realistic scenario. If the city were to vote to place a measure on the ballot, voters are going to have the option of voting up or down on a particular measure, be it a sales tax or a UUT. They're not going to have the option of choosing one over the other. And so we wanted to make sure that our research simulated that kind of dynamic. And secondly, if you think about it, if we allowed people to choose which of these versions they wanted to be in, which sample, you'd create this situation where you drastically inflate the estimate of support you have for each measure. If you think about it, if half the population wanted parcel tax, I mean, a sales tax, and half the population wanted a UUT, and you let them self-select in whichever version of the sample they'd want, they'd go to the versions they want, and in that respective poll, we'd have 100% support for a sales tax and 100% support for a UUT. So we want to make sure that these individuals are distributed on a random basis to each one of these versions, and they're not self-selecting into one or the other. Because this was a sample of 600 total and 300 for the respective versions, and not a census of all your likely voters, it has what's known as a margin of error due to sampling. And in this case, for the sample, questions that were answered by all 600, it's plus or minus 3.87%. For questions that were only asked of one of the 300 sub-samples, it's plus or minus 5.5%. Okay, on to the results. The first substantive question in the survey was a bit of a warm-up, but it was certainly relevant to this effort. And we asked, generally speaking, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the city of San Carlos is doing to provide city services? We're not asking about specific services or facilities, we're asking about the city's performance overall. And because of that, it can be considered an overall performance rating for the city among likely November 2009 voters. And what you see here are the results that yet 89% of that likely voter universe say that they were generally satisfied with the city's performance in providing services. Just 6% said they were dissatisfied, about 4% were unsure. We've asked this question for a lot of cities. I've seen it as low as 40% satisfaction. I've seen it as high as 97% satisfaction. So being in the high 80s, low 90s is generally a good place to be. The other thing I would just mention is, it also generally bodes well for the feasibility of a revenue measure. One of the strongest predictors of someone's willingness to support a revenue measure is how well they think you're doing as an agency with the resources you have already. If you're doing a good job, they're more apt to support you with additional revenue measure. If they think you aren't doing a good job, even if that's because of lack of finances, they tend not to be willing to lend you more money. It's kind of like a bank. Next question was, we asked them overall, I'm sorry, we followed up that question about overall city performance with a question asking them what they would say is the most important issue facing San Carlos that they'd like local leaders to address. This question was asked in an open-ended manner, meaning we didn't provide them with the categories that you see here. They responded verbatim, and then we looked at those verbatim responses and grouped them into the categories you see here. Probably the most striking thing about this is the number-one issue that came out, remember, this is top of mind for voters, the number-one issue was addressing the city's budget issues. First time I've ever seen that in polling. And what that suggests is, the city's done a very good job communicating with voters over the past six months or nine months about what the budget constraints are and what the, and how that's likely to affect the city. Last time, the number-one issue was not sure, they couldn't think of anything. Okay, on to the initial ballot test. At this point, we present what we call our initial ballot test, and the idea is, before we get too far into the poll, where we start talking about projects and services, or arguments pro and con, we want to present them with a mock-up of what we think a ballot statement would look like if it replaced on the ballot, and get their reaction to it. It's a good measure of where community sentiment is today, without the impact of any additional information or events that are going to occur from here to the point of the election. The language for the measure you see at the top is, was consistent for both versions. For the sales tax, you can see, we asked whether the city should enact a 1/2 cent sales tax with annual independent audits and all money staying local. For the UUT, the wording's slightly different. Shall the city of San Carlos enact a 5% utility users' tax on gas, electric, water, and telecommunications charges with annual independent audits and all money staying local? Again, the top part of the language was the same. And here are the results. On the left is showing the sales tax, on the right is the UUT. This is, again, baseline support for these respective measures, so it's a good measure of where the community is at today. The sales tax, you have 62% of respondents who said that they would definitely or probably support that measure. By comparison, in 2008, when we did the original study, it was about 60%. So it's a little higher for the sales tax now than it was then. The UUT clocks in at 53% support at this point, which is actually dead-on with what we found in 2008 as well. A couple of things I'll mention. One of, if you dig behind these numbers, so this is the overall among all respondents, if you dig behind these numbers and you look at support among various subgroups of residents, so for example, bipartisanship, by length of residence in the city, by age, by gender, by these various categories, what's interesting is, the sales tax tends to have a pretty, has a much more even response across subgroups, so that you don't see the, a very large difference between one group, subgroup, and another. The UUT is a little different in that respect. There were some groups that, whereas they were reasonably supportive of a sales tax, were, had a more negative reaction to the UUT. We also had some more positive reactions to the UUT. And so there seemed to be a greater swing in opinions about the UUT across the community than there were with respect to the sales tax. A good example of that is, if you look at Republicans, for example, as a group, they had 55% support for a sales tax, but at the UT, it was 36%. So their reaction to the UT was substantially more negative. Okay, following up the initial ballot test, we asked a question focused on the utility users' tax rate. Naturally, the level of support for a tax can, will depend on the tax rate. And so we wanted to get an understanding of how sensitive San Carlos voters were to the tax rate for the UT. And so we presented them with both a 5% rate as well as a 4% rate, and asked them whether they would support it at those particular rates. It's important to recognize that what we've done here is, whereas the initial ballot test, we presented them with the language of the ballot, of which the tax rate itself was only a component of that 75-word statement, now what we've done is sort of focus their attention on the tax rate and said, okay, what if it's 5%? What if it's 4%? So we focused their attention on that rate. And support drops a little bit at this point. At the 5% rate, it's 47% support, whereas at the 4% rate, it climbs back up to about 52% support. And what that suggests is that when you're talking about tax rates and you focus their attention on it, there's some sensitivity there, right? Okay. Next, we transitioned to what we call our projects and services question. And the idea here is really twofold. We're going to, on the one hand, start educating a respondent about what this measure would accomplish, if it were supported by voters. And secondly, it's popularity contest. We want to understand which of the services and facilities that are up here on this list, voters most favor funding with the proceeds of this measure, and which of those they're somewhat less supportive of funding. At the top of this list, what you see is, the public safety services, not surprisingly, tests the strongest. You had 87% of voters who said that they would favor spending some of the money on providing fire services, followed by police services and on down. Probably, from my perspective, one of the more striking factors here, though, is when you look across this list, even at the bottom of this list, you still have 2/3 of the respondents we spoke with say that they would favor spending money on providing senior programs and services. And this is good, because it's a general tax, right? It's meant to fund a lot of the things in the city. And what it suggests is, a lot of the projects and services that could be funded by this measure are, in fact, supported by your community. As I noted at the outset, if council were to vote to place a measure on the ballot, there'll be an election cycle, and it was important for us to test both positive arguments about this measure, as well as negative arguments, to understand how voters might respond to that information, in terms of their willingness to support a measure. Here we show the positive arguments, and the nature of the question is, we say supporters of the measure say blank, one of these statements up here that are shown in truncated form. And we just simply ask, do you think this is a very convincing, somewhat convincing, or not at all convincing reason to support this measure? And we've sorted these, these statements by their order of how compelling voters felt they were. Top of this list was, all money raised by this measure will be spent locally to maintain quality of services in our community. It cannot be taken away by politicians or Sacramento to be used for other purposes. The number-two argument there was, when you need emergency care, you need it fast. Minutes count in these situations. This measure will ensure we have enough police officers, firefighters, and paramedics so they can respond quickly to emergencies. Excuse me. Again, though, if you look across these, these statements, there's a lot of sort of compelling, positive statements that can be made on behalf of this measure, that voters find convincing reasons to support the measure. At this point, we circle back with a respondent. Now, they've heard about, they've heard the language once before, the ballot language. They've been exposed to the possible tax rates for a UT. They've heard about the projects and services that could be funded. They also have been exposed to positive information about these projects. So often, this is the high-water mark in terms of support measurement in a, in a poll like this. And what you find is that at the sales tax, support the sales tax is 63% at this point, and that the gap between the UT and the sales tax closes somewhat, and support for the UT is 59%. So the sales tax went up about one point from that initial ballot test, whereas the UT went up about five points. However, when you look at the intensity of support, that's that definitely yes category. We still have about an eight-point gap between the sales tax and the UT, in terms of definite support for that particular version. Okay, just like we tested positive arguments, we also tested negative arguments. And the top negative arguments were that the city needs to live within its means, just like everybody else, and that this tax is unfair to seniors and others on fixed incomes, for number two. And then the third top-ranked one was an argument that pertained to the UT. It's not fair for the city to tax gas, water, electricity. These are essential household items that people have to use. And then we circle back one more time, and we present them with that ballot language again, and we ask them whether they would support or oppose the measure, based on what they've heard so far. Support for the sales tax checks in at 61%, with about 41% definitely. Support for the UT checks in at 54%, with 30% definitely. So you've got about a seven-point gap overall, and about a 10% gap in terms of the percentage of voters who are definitely supportive of a particular measure. I don't have a slide on it, but it's worth noting, after this question, we follow back with a very pointed question about a possible exemption for seniors on fixed incomes for the UT, and that if the UT included this exemption for qualified seniors, would they support it or not? At that point, when we focus their attention on that particular piece, support does come up for the UT to about 61%. And we might have some discussions about that, but it's important to recognize that that's a, that's an effect that doesn't happen naturally, it's an effect that happens through education. So if you have questions about that, we can, we can talk some more about it. Okay, and on to the key findings and conclusions. I'll keep it brief. I've put more detail in the report itself, and I'd be happy to answer your questions about this. But the first overarching question, as I opened up this presentation, was, is it feasible? Is it feasible to move forward with a revenue measure and have a reasonable chance of success? Clearly, the answer to that is yes. When I think of feasibility, and when Charles thinks of feasibility, there's a number of things that we want to see in place. Number one is that you have solid baseline support for your measure. And by solid, I mean, you have a substantial level of support above what you would need here initially to be supportive, be supportive on Election Day. Second is that what you're going to fund with this, with this measure are popular, right? The voters are favorable towards spending the money on the things that you're talking about spending the money on. And then, thirdly, that you have positive messages about your measure that resonate with voters, that when they hear these things about why this measure is needed and why it should be passed, they are, they see those reasons as being compelling to continue their support for a measure like this. I think it's also, sort of as an aside worth noting, we do this with other cities, and you have an interesting situation where you had a survey done in 2008, very similar to this one. Results are actually reasonably consistent. In fact, the support levels, despite everything that's happened in the last year in terms of family economies and state budget crisis, increases in state taxes, that support levels for these measures have maintained themselves pretty consistently in your community. That isn't the case in a lot of the communities that I've worked in. In fact, I've seen rollbacks of 6, sometimes even 8%. And I think one of the big differences is, as a city, you've made an effort over the last year to communicate with voters about what your needs are and why, why a measure like this is important. Some of the other cities I worked with did not, and they've come back and they've found the substantial slippage. Now, having said that it's feasible, it's also important to recognize that a poll like this is not a crystal ball, right? It isn't predicting what's going to happen on Election Day. It's a snapshot in time. What's going to happen on Election Day is determined based on the decisions council makes with respect to whether you want to move forward, if you're going to move forward, how you're going to structure this measure, as well as the level of effort that's going to be put in, in terms of public education and independent campaign. And so to that end, what I thought I'd do is highlight a couple of considerations that council has, as well as our recommendations with respect to how to structure this measure. The first, most obvious one would be the tax mechanism. Should this move forward as a sales tax, or should this move forward as a UUT? It's pretty clear, both from the 2008 poll, as well as this poll, that the natural level of support in the community is substantially stronger for a sales tax compared to a UUT. We saw the initial baseline poll before, that there was about a 10-point gap. We're seeing that same gap here. The intensity of support is stronger for a sales tax when compared to a UUT. And the other thing is, as I mentioned, when you look past the overall results and you look at the individual voter groups, you have, you have a broader appeal for a sales tax. You don't have as much, you don't have the sort of swings in support, depending on whether you go across subgroup and subgroup. Whereas with the UUT, you get some groups who react much more negatively to the UUT than they do the sales tax. So if you're asking me as a professional, which of these is the most viable moving forward? I think there's really no question that the sales tax is the most viable, because it has that natural level of support above and beyond what exists for the UUT. Tax rate, 1/2 cent would work. That's, I think the options you have are 1/2 cent and 1/4 cent. There's no reason to go to 1/4 cent. I think a 1/2 cent would work. Secondly is duration. How long should this measure be? We tested a measure that was six years. That would be our recommendation, to stick at the six-year level. You don't want the duration of the measure to become an impediment to a voter's willingness to support it. And finally, anytime you're going to place a measure on a ballot, I don't care what agency it is, it's incumbent upon you to make sure you're educating your voters about what it is you're asking them to vote on. And so when you consider, if the council moves to, decides to place a measure on a ballot, it's important that, that communications still continue over the course of moving forward. So with that, I, it's the end of my slides, and I welcome questions and comments from council.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McClarny. Questions, reserve comments later, because we have some folks that want to talk, but questions for Dr. McClarny? Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, being on the revenue subcommittee, I've had plenty of time for questions.
Okay. Mr. Ahmad?
A couple of quick ones. First of all, I think you did say that these are likely voters, but I was kind of going through the data, and I'm...
Sure. We looked actually at two, two, if you think about the likely November universe, there's a likely November universe on the natural. And what that would be was individuals who, if totally left alone, meaning it was a typical turnout scenario, they're the kind of people who would go to the polls, right, naturally? That represented the bulk of this sample. But we also wanted to understand, what if there was an issue on the ballot, for example, that drew more people out? So you had a higher-than-expected turnout in November? We also included a layer of those individuals in the sample as well. So these are people who we wouldn't expect to turn out in a low, in a low or typical turnout scenario, but we would expect to turn out if this were a high turnout scenario. So we tested the high version with subsets of the, of the other version as well.
I was also curious about the sunset provision, that you've got a six-year. Did you test any other timeframes? Is the issue six years, or is the issue that there is a sunset?
We tested six years in here. We didn't test another variation on this. And one of the problems I've, one of the things you'll find with sunsets is when, when a... And one of the problems I've, one of the things you'll find with sunsets is when a voter is asked to vote on a revenue measure, they tend to look at, what's it going to fund, and how much is it going to cost? They tend not to focus on the tax rate, however, I mean, excuse me, on the duration. However, if, for whatever reason, through campaigning or whatever, the focus becomes the duration, suddenly 10, 12 years starts to sound long, right, like a long time. Even 20 years can sound like a long time. And so our recommendation, and especially given these times and the fact that the motivation for this measure is in part because you're in an economic time that's causing difficulties for the city, we recommended six years because it's not a long duration, right, such that it might cause somebody who would be naturally supportive of this to say, oh, it's too long. I'm going to oppose it because of that. And secondly, because it seems to fit well with the timeline moving forward for, hopefully the economy turns back up, revenues increase. Certainly, and after six years, if the council chose to do so, you could place it up and decide if the voters want to renew it or not.
Also, with regard to, I believe it's in your summary, item 3B ballot test with positives showing sales tax, and then the UUT at 59% versus 54% last year, can you give some background on why you saw that 5% increase from last year?
Hard to say, frankly. You're going to have a certain amount of wiggle room between last year and this year in these results. For example, initially, we had about 2% higher for the sales tax this time than we did last time. And what we found is that midway through the poll, support for the, but the UUT initially was dead-on to where it was last year. Once they had heard more about what this project, what this measure would fund in terms of projects, the interim ballot test, the UUT, was up to 59%, whereas last year was about 54%. It's hard to say why exactly it's higher this time. The bounce is higher. I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Grokot? Questions for Dr. McClurney? Okay. Mr. Royce?
Question deals with the shift from the three kind of, or the three areas of the survey. You call it the initial ballot, and then the ballot testing, and the final. Of course, the final's the most important. In looking at sales tax, of course, it all stays within one percentage point of 62% or 61%, very consistent when you begin talking to the citizen about a sales tax. And when you start giving them information, and in the final, when you give them the information and all the pros and cons and everything, it stays consistent. With the utility, it goes 53, 59, and then back to 54. And then, when we talk about senior exemption, it kicks up from 54 to 61%. So the two-part question is, you know, because there's a lot of information you could talk about, if I could narrow it down, what happened from 59 to 54? From the interim, this is all utility, from the 59 to 54? And then, what happened from 54 to 61? Especially if you're talking to only 300 people, and considering there's a small percentage of those that are senior citizens, they're 10% or 15%, 18% or something, to increase seven points is a significant, in other words, are the younger people in the middle, I mean, are all those groups impacting that senior? Or it just seems like it's a terrific impact to 61% with such a small influenced group of seniors? So those are the two questions. Again, the interim, why it dipped, and then why it went so high?
I think it's, the interim goes from 59, right? So, and as I mentioned, that typically is a high-water mark because they've heard lots of positive things about this measure, what it would fund, and positive arguments. They have yet to hear the negatives. And so at that point, they are at 59%.
Correct.
The dip from 59% to back down to 54% is a function of the negative arguments we presented to them, right? So we presented these negative arguments. One of the top three was a specific argument about the UUT being it's unfair to tax gas and utilities because these are things people have to use, right? They don't have the option of not using them. So that drop is due to the negative arguments. And now, from the negative, from that point at 54, we then focused their attention on this idea of a senior exemption, right? And that if this included the senior exemption, would you support this measure, yes or no? And you do, you get a good bump out of that. I think it's another 6%, 7% from there.
Yeah, it's seven points. Not only is it seven points, the 61 matches very closely to sales tax now.
You know, what's interesting about, what's interesting about that question, and there's a parallel to it earlier in the poll, which I'll tell you about, which is this. In a poll like this, when you're thinking about a ballot measure, and think about when voters go in to look at a 75-word statement, they kind of encapsulate the whole thing. They read it, they put it all in their head, and they make a decision, right? When you focus just on one piece of it, right, so for example, the senior exemption, we took two sentences to educate them about what a senior exemption is, and boy, if it included this, would you support it, right? So we've focused their attention on it, which means you kind of elevate the importance of that consideration, right, by focusing their attention on it, and then asking whether they support. So you get a seven-point boost out of that, which is great. The question, the real question, though, is, what happens if it were just in the ballot test itself as a two- or three-word statement, right? Would you still have a seven-point bump? In my experience, no. You might get anywhere from maybe two to four points out of that, because you haven't spent two sentences talking about it. You're going to get maybe three words to talk about it in the space of a ballot test, right? The reason we didn't have it in the ballot test, by the way, was because it was not a foregone conclusion that there would be a senior exemption in the UUT. And if we included it in the ballot test, we'd have no way to take it out and tell you what would happen, right? So we didn't test it with the ballot test. We waited till the end to talk about it. The earlier parallel to this, meaning by focusing on that issue, you kind of raise the importance of that factor, and that's a positive thing, right, the senior exemption. The earlier parallel in the poll of that is that when we talk about the tax rate, right? When you look at the tax rate for the UT, and we focus them on that issue, what we found is, once, although they supported at 53% a 5% UUT on the initial ballot test, if you follow up with a question that focuses on the tax rate, that support level dropped 5% to 47%, right? So why? Because we focused them on that particular element of that larger package. And the tax rate is something that tends to diminish support when you focus, when it becomes about the money, right? On the other hand, we asked about the senior exemption, and by focusing on that, we elevate the importance of that, and it tends to build support. That's a long-winded way of saying, I think that the challenge is not that that effect isn't real, but that there's a lot of education that would have to happen to simulate that in an actual campaign, right? You'd have to have a campaign that would do one heck of a job communicating with your voters about that particular issue to have that kind of an impact. And frankly, I haven't seen a campaign be able to reach everybody yet, right? If you'd, and so hopefully that answers your question.
It doesn't ask, it's still, I'm still questioning the validity of seven points increase.
Well, no, go ahead. You can question it, but he just answered it, so.
Did he?
Yeah, he did. He did answer the question. You may not like his answer, but he did answer it.
I know. I'm talking about that, the 300 population, is that interested in senior exemption? That's what...
I understand, but he just answered the question.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
I think it's an interesting question, because I think what Mr. Royce may be driving at is, when we get into discussion about a utility tax or a sales tax, one could argue that a utility tax, you know, if you want to put something on the ballot and you want to have fair assurance based on the poll that it's going to be supported by the community, I think what Mr. Royce is driving at is, could a utility tax be put on the ballot with the senior exemption and have as likely, nearly as likely a chance of passing as a sales tax? And so I think it's an interesting question, and I'm following him, and I'm following the answer, but I'm still, and so I guess, if I were to ask the question, I would just drive to the point, do you think a utility tax could be put on the ballot with a senior exemption and have nearly or the same likelihood of support and passage as a sales tax based on your poll?
No, I don't. The sales tax, if you look at that initial ballot test, and I don't have it up, sales tax clocked in a natural, I mean, you just mentioned that the most important ballot test or the most important, the final ballot test is the most important question or the most test. I would disagree with that. The most important test, in my opinion, is the initial ballot test. Why? Because that tells you where your community's at today, right? The final ballot test occurs after they've heard a lot about this measure and been educated over the course of an interview in a way that a campaign's going to have a very difficult time simulating, right? Because you've, we've had their captive attention for 15 minutes on this poll. So the initial ballot test is the most important read in a poll, because it tells you where you're at today. And it tells you what the natural level of support is in the community for a sales tax versus a UUT. UUT without a senior exemption, I'll qualify that for a second. So what we see on that initial test is a substantial gap. You have a nine-point gap in support when you compare the sales tax on the one hand at 61% and the UUT at 53%, right? If we were to conclude, the question is, if you included a senior exemption in that 75-word ballot statement, what might we have seen with the UUT, right? Would it be higher? I would say, yeah, it would be higher. Would it be seven points higher? I've never seen that in my experience. I would say at most, you're going to get 4% at most. And so it becomes an education exercise in a way to try and bring that level up to where you would, to where the sales tax is naturally already.
So through the chair, the issue is education, and then that becomes, you know, more effort. And so it, you know, sort of in the bat handle, one just has more support. I've had similar questions. But to me, the intensity is something that is worth noting by council. Definitely, yes, with a senior exemption, jumps nine percentage points. I think it's just great information from us. It's also speaks to the character of the community, which is concern for people. And I think that that's a great thing. Separate debate, which is the right tax measure. Certainly happy to hear Councilmember Grokot entertaining the tax measure tonight. Just glad to hear you pose that question.
Through the chair, I did not do that. But I simply was trying to clarify Mr. Royce's point.
I'm not quite ready, sorry. It was fantastic that you posed that question. But all right, that definite yes intensity, I think, is the statement of the community, education is, I think, a key component in this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, I appreciate it. We've got a couple of people that want to talk on this, ask or make comments, I should say, on this. First one is Yvonne McClure.
Yvonne or Bonnie McClure, San Carlos. I was one of the 300 polled on the sales tax. I was very angry. It annoyed me terribly when I kept saying, I don't want a sales tax, I want a utility tax, and she would pay no attention to me. I finally got down to the end, and I said, well, I know the city needs the money, so yes, I would vote for any kind of a tax to get the city some money. But the point is that I don't agree with the survey, and I still don't. I think the main question to ask those people that said they would vote for the sales tax is, will you commit to buying in San Carlos rather than going to Belmont or Redwood City if this sales tax passes, because you're going to be charged more for anything you buy in San Carlos, and you can go travel a mile, or half a mile, or at the most, two miles, and save some money? Because one of the questions on the sales tax was to the effect that other people visiting the town are going to be paying for your services. And why should they come into San Carlos and pay more? I can't see the reasoning to that. And I think it's morally unjust to depend on other people to pay for the services that you get. And if we have a utility tax, the people that get the services are paying for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McClure. Pat Bell?
Pat Bell, San Carlos. Just to follow up on what Bonnie said, what worries me about the sales tax and whether people buy in San Carlos is that B-to-B construction material component of our income, which is very, very important to San Carlos. Now, I might not go to Belmont to buy a gallon of milk because it's cheaper, but the guy who has to spend $1,000 on building materials and is going to pay a half a cent sales tax at Home Depot in San Carlos might go to the Home Depot in San Mateo to do that. And we don't want to drive that segment out of San Carlos. We want them to thrive here. I know you've had a lot of complaints about the methodology of this survey, and I agree with all the ones I've heard. I also, and I know that you've heard from at least one PhD who thinks the methodology is just appalling. As a layperson who is not an expert in this area, I think the biggest problem is, Dr. McClurney talked about a natural level of support. Well, I think there's a natural level of education about a sales tax that doesn't exist for the UUT. The most I've heard, and I pay as much attention as most people in this town to what the city has to say, the most I've heard about the UUT is, well, the staff thought that it would be better because it's greener, and we were surprised that people wanted a sales tax. Well, how many people know what a UUT is, what it would mean to them? Not very many, I would suspect. And when I gave up my landline and went to cell phone only, it never entered my mind to call voter registration and change my phone number. And I'll bet that the other people in San Carlos who use cell phone only now didn't change either. So when you're calling only people who either knew to do that or have landlines, I think you've skewed your data. It's another problem.
Two minutes. You're up. Can you have a conclusion, please?
I think the education before the survey about a UUT would have made a big difference. And for you to vote on it with such a lousy survey is very troubling.
Okay, thank you. What I was going to do, gentlemen, if it's, is anyone else wish to speak on 10B on the polling item? Not on the, not on whether it's a tax or not tax, specifically on what Dr. McClurney was saying and the polling thing, because that's what 10B is. It's a presentation. Do you want to speak on that? Please fill out a form. You don't have to do it before. Please come forward, identify yourself.
I'm Nancy Nagel.
Fine, please come forward then and identify yourself.
I'm Nancy Nagel.
To the, I'm sorry, to the microphone, please. We need it to...
You need the hall.
Sure.
I'm Nancy Nagel. I live at 859 Hemlock Street. Good evening, council members. I'm also speaking in favor, I understand that we're talking about the poll.
Right.
Clearly, the UT did less well than the sales tax, but I just want to speak in favor of the arguments already made, that it's an education issue, people are not familiar with the UT, they already pay sales tax, so there's a level of comfort with that. But it's not known necessarily that it's extremely regressive to add to, to increase the sales tax. And there's this whole environmental argument for the UUT that, you know, the San Carlos...
Again, it's on the poll. I'm trying to, we're going to, we have a whole other item to talk about the tax, Ms. Nagel.
Okay, then I'm off point.
That's what I'm trying to get at, yeah. I'm sorry, I apologize. Thank you. Any other comments on the poll? Sir, please come forward. Again, we'll be speaking on 10C, all specific to the other issues that folks are bringing up.
I'm signed up for the next discussion, but I have something here. Did you poll the business community?
Mr. Krab, please speak, yes.
Did they poll the business community?
They did their survey, how they did it with telephone survey.
How about, that's a good question. Did they?
It is a good question, and they indicated, they did individual homes. Is that correct, sir?
10%.
Please come up, Dr. McClurney.
We polled the likely voter universe, because those are the individuals that are going to be casting ballots. Businesses, to the extent that a business owner or someone working in a business is also a registered voter in the city and likely to cast a ballot, they would be included in that sample.
Okay, great.
There's a number in there. It's like 10%.
So the answer is no. I mean, basically, business as an entity is, was not surveyed, and obviously, the sales tax directly affects business, so I would like you to consider that in terms of the way this survey, so another reason why I think this survey was also flawed. And I'll talk about the tax the next time.
Okay.
Can I just add through the chair? In the staff report on item five, it does have the results of the business owners who also are San Carlos voters, and I would call your attention to the fact that of business owners who live in San Carlos and are San Carlos voters, they voted sales tax support at 45% and utility user tax at 33%.
It was 10% of the sample was, family owns local business.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So what I'd like to do, gentlemen, on this is, because I know there's a lot of comments that we're going to have and questions, specifically, the poll's done, I moved to 10C when we, I'm sure we're going to have a lot of discussion and comments. I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of discussion and comments.
I just would like to add one comment on the polling.
Okay, sure.
Because I was one of the 300 who was called, and I can't remember if it was the utility or sales tax, I didn't quite frankly pay attention, I just knew it was a poll about the taxes. And I understand why the questions were asked the way they were, but I found that, uh, the, the questions, to me, came across as being leading, they're leading you on to a certain place, and it was very difficult to, uh, I'd say, hold a position, if you will, because you're, you've got these guardrails on both sides of you that are saying, uh, you know, asking the questions that they, that they are. And so it just made it very difficult. Um, I, and I think I probably felt some of what a couple of the speakers talked about, where you're, you're hemmed in to something that you don't necessarily wanna be hemmed into. I was also cognizant of the fact, when I listened to the questions, that one of the things that I brought up, that I asked for when we started this process, was not included. And that is, through the polling questions, through Mr. Weiss's presentation, in my mind, and I went to some of those too, there was very little on what we talked about with the grand jury report, which is educating the voters on how we spend our money, what we pay our employees, what the retirement benefits are and the health benefits and so on and so forth. There was, in, in the poll, there was no information on that. And there was no discussion about, and again, I brought this up at the council retreat. I said, "I, I don't necessarily wanna just hear about, you know, either raise taxes or cut services." That, to me, is a too narrow-focused argument. And the poll did the same thing. All the poll did was say, "Do you wanna, you've got these services, do you like the services, do you wanna continue them?" Uh, and, you know, if you don't, uh, do you wanna raise taxes to continue them? If you don't, they're likely to be cut and so forth. That was the, the way the argument was set up. There was no talk about any other ways of, uh, saving money or, you know, moving things around. And so that was my experience from the poll.
Thank you. All right. So we've had the poll presented, which is item 10B. I'd like to move on to item 10C, which is consideration of a resolution establishing on November 3rd, 2009, as a date for a municipal election on a proposed ballot measure, one-half cent transactions and use tax for general fund purposes, and ordinance adding, adding chapter 3.38, transactions and use tax, to San Carlos Municipal Code and establishing policies and procedures in connection with such an election. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As most of you know, uh, city staff have made numerous presentations on the status of our budget, the, and included within that presentation is a lengthy segment, in the full version at least, that speaks to compensation and, and the things that we've done to address compensation within the city of San Carlos and, and other expenses. A year ago, uh, staff recommended to the city council that we, uh, adopt a resolution declaring a fiscal emergency and putting a revenue measure on the ballot. That was after nearly a decade of successive cuts in expenditures and programs. That was after cutting from 125 positions to 111 positions in San Carlos, and as Councilmember Lewis mentioned, that is 20 to 120 less than other cities our size on the peninsula. Uh, I think there can be an argument about services that maybe some other communities provide, uh, but then you can look at services that we try to provide, but maybe don't provide as, as well as we could or should, or at least as well as other communities in the peninsula provide. One manager called me, for example, and indicated that he'd read the grand jury report and had looked at San Carlos and was being pressured by his city council to explain why they had 50% more employees than the city of San Carlos did. And so he analyzed it and tried to evaluate where that, uh, came from, and he got it down to where, uh, they were contracting for certain things, we were contracting for certain things, and he thought he could explain part of it, but he got down to the last 28% and he couldn't explain it away. And so he was calling to ask for our assistance in trying to determine how that discrepancy might have occurred. And, and when you look at it, in that particular city, uh, they simply had, uh, three and a half employees that were assigned to, uh, what we would call green activities. We dedicate part of the assistant city manager's time to recycling and, 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 and green activities. They had a, a full division of employees doing that. Another city to our north has five engineers, we have two. Uh, and these are engineers that are working on, uh, street repairs, storm drainage repairs, sewer repairs. These are essential services that a municipality must provide. And we've talked about the mandates and the consequences if cities do not provide the mandated services that are required by federal and state government. Uh, these are not just additional add-on programs that are done for the fun of it. These are things that are being required of local governments that are essential to the public health and safety of your community. We've reorganized, uh, in the past few years to seriously cut administration and overhead costs. We've cut benefits and we've cut employee compensation levels to a point now that we are 5% to 10% below market rate. Uh, it could be arguments that we should go further. This is also in addition to the benefits that were reduced. So if we're not gonna pay comparable, comparable benefits and we're not gonna pay comparable salaries, you have to ask yourself at the end of the day whether or not you're going to be able to keep the employees that you've trained, whether or not a police officer who is working in this community, uh, wouldn't move to the next community next door once jobs become available and the economy picks up for 5%, 10%, 15% or 20% more in compensation. Are you going to be in a position in San Carlos where you're training employees only for the purpose of that employee moving to the neighboring jurisdiction next door? The employee groups have worked with us in the last year with new contracts, the last of which was just signed in November after the economic crisis, uh, after the fall in the stock, the stock market. These are contracts that we've entered into knowing full well because of the future benefits to the city of San Carlos with respect to compensation that will be necessary in order to meet the services that are demanded here. Yet despite all of these actions, the budget that we started with this year was in a deficit of $2.7 million. And how do you put that in some kind of meaningful term that the community, you know, that the council, that, that the staff can all understand? The net value of the Parks and Recreation Department in its entirety in San Carlos is about $2.9 million, which means that to balance the budget, it would be the equivalent of eliminating your entire Parks and Recreation Department, the senior center or the adult community center, the youth center, the classes, the sports, the, uh, you know, all of the community activities that are provided by that particular department that goes a long way to establishing the sense of community that has become, I think, an important part of the, uh, the, the, the city of good living. That's the magnitude of the problem. A year ago, when we recommended that the matter be addressed and put on the city council's agenda, we asked that the council declare a fiscal emergency. Obviously, the situation one year later is much worse than it was a year ago. We've made further cuts, and we've also deferred, um, purchases for equipment replacement that you can't do continuously forever. You, you can do it for a year and, and get by, we believe. Uh, we're not fund, funding some of our obligations fully, uh, and, and we should be. We, um, are using reserves to balance the budget this year. Because we weren't able to get an answer a year ago, we're now tapping into reserves in order to balance the budget so that we can get to a point so that the community has an opportunity to speak on this particular issue through the ballot box. You know, the, the survey's important. It, it, as mentioned though, it gives us a point in time. There's going to be a lot of activity in the next few months with respect to moving forward on that particular issue if it is indeed placed on the ballot. Uh, you know, surveys don't mean a whole lot, though. It's the actions that are taken subsequent to that, once the ballot measure is placed on the ballot and, and, and the city has a chance to, uh, to react to that. The committee's recommendation that has been working with staff on this is to consider a sales tax measure. Many of the reasons that were evident in the poll or the survey are, are the cause for that. Uh, I would add additionally to that, in response to some of the comments that I've already heard, that while, where the sales tax is very apparent to people in terms of an additional cost within the community, the utility tax may not be as apparent. And yet the business community, when we've met with them, have noted the fact that if we were to go the utility tax route, the price still goes up. It's just a matter of it now being the price of the product as opposed to the price of the tax on top of the product. Additionally, with respect to the utility tax, and, and as indicated by one of the, the public speakers, uh, staff started in that arena, and to some degree, I feel a little bit remorse for having introduced the issue because it seems to have polarized some of us to some degree. And yet, the mechanics of how we would impose or how we would, uh, place a utility tax on the ballot have not wholly been worked out with respect to which utilities it would be applied to, with respect to, um, whether or not there would be exemptions for seniors or for low incomes. And all of that complicates the matter, uh, and all of that would need to be addressed within the next two-week period if we're going to place this matter on the ballot this year. And without declaring a fiscal emergency, if we don't place a matter on the ballot this year, we must wait two more years unless we get that fiscal emergency declaration before the community would have a chance to speak on this. And I believe that your city government would be dramatically different, whether it's the loss of your Parks and Recreation Department in, in its entirety, or whether or not it's other, uh, cuts that are made more across the board throughout the city of San Carlos. Uh, with that, it is the committee's recommendation that we move forward with the sales tax revenue measure. The city attorney has drafted that measure, and I would introduce Greg Rubens now to talk about the technicalities of that revenue measure.
Good evening, Greg Ruben, city attorney. Um, tonight, uh, the recommended, uh, resolution before you is for a half-cent, uh, transaction and use tax, a sales tax. It would be, the resolution places the matter, um, on the November 3rd ballot. Attached to the resolution is a proposed ordinance that the voters would actually be approving at the election, um, should it pass. In order to get, uh, for that resolution to place the matter on the ballot, it requires, uh, under state law, two-thirds vote of the city council. Um, in this case, because you have a five-member city council, it's going to require four votes for it to be placed on the ballot. And then the voters at the ballot, because this is a general tax, not a special tax, that's, a tax that's earmarked, uh, the funds of which would be earmarked for specific programs, um, the, in order for the voters to pass this measure, it would require a majority vote, 50% plus one. This is a, um, as pointed out by the city manager, this is a little different than the last year when you were initially considering this because we do not have to make a fiscal emergency finding to place, uh, this type of a measure on a regular general, general municipal election ballot. With that, um, I, uh, that's basically my report, and, uh, if, if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them about the resolution or the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rubens, Mr. Weiss. Uh, Mr. Lewis, any questions of either gentleman? Mr. Ramon? Mr. Grokod, questions?
Yeah, I do for the city managers to make something clear, or get, get clear, because we've talked about budget cuts. I think, I'd like to go back a few years because we talked about cutting 2.7 from our budget for this year. Can you tell us what our budget was for '07, '08, '08, '09, and what it is this year for '09, '10 that we've approved?
I, I don't have those numbers with me, but I will explain the budget process and how, uh, how cuts are calculated. And there's no, there's, there's no question that when you put a budget together, you account for, uh, CPI increases. We provide a CPI allocation when we create a base budget. It increases the budget, I think this year we were using 2% to 3%. Then we cut from the new base. We also accommodate for known compensation increases, negotiated, uh, salary packages that have been, uh, negotiated and approved by the city council. So you start from a base and cut from that. Now, the result, though, is that we have gone from 125 to 111 positions. We have cut programs, we have eliminated positions, we have cut administration and overhead. And so, yes, if you look at, and we've shown this in charts, we're not, uh, contesting this at all. If you look at charts, revenues and expenditures both have gone up over time. Our budget today is not the same as what it was 10 years ago. It's simply not. It has grown.
Well, I wish we had for the public those numbers right now. But be that as it may. If we go with a sales tax, how will our sales tax compare with others on the, on the peninsula and even in the state of California?
It would increase from 9.25 to 9.75%. So it would be a 0.5% increase. There are other cities, and I think we've provided that information previously, a list of other cities have adopted sales tax increases.
Yeah, there is a, there is a list of the cities in California who've done local sales taxes in the previous measure, uh, previous item, it's attachment two. I think it's worth noting that last year when we presented this to you, there were 65 such cities. This year, there are 76. The other significant change is three of those cities changed their rate, two of them renewed their rate after a sunset and the rates went up, one of them went down.
Okay, timeout on your answer. You're talking about this chart right here, correct? Okay, but we live in a, in a county with, you know, there's layers of sales tax. So the consummate sales tax that we'll have in this city is going to be 9.75%.
That's correct.
Okay, so this chart shows us what other cities are tacking on, but they might be tacking onto a, something that's already lower because of what their county does or whatever. So my question is, where will we stand on the peninsula and in the state of California with regards to our sales tax?
Well, again, the cities here, I mean, if you're talking about the, the San Mateo County, I know San Mateo has a matter or, uh, issues that they're considering putting on the ballot, uh, this year for a sales tax as well as for a hotel tax. Uh, Pacifica put one, uh, put a measure on, it failed. I believe San Bruno has...
San Bruno tried one, uh, a year or two ago, failed by 50 votes and may bring it back.
Yeah, so I mean, there are other cities considering this. Other cities are considering utility taxes. Maps that we put up previously have shown that many of our neighboring cities have adopted some kind of special tax already of one type or another. And like I say, the increase then in the cost is either born in the product or it's born in the tax rate that's applied to the product.
Okay, so let's go down the peninsula. Let's start it.
Well, we, we, I would like to know the answer.
And I'm gonna try to answer your question for you, so you don't have to go through 20 cities, okay? As far as I understand it, there's at least one city that has a higher than 9.25 in the county. That's the only, if, if that, at this point in time.
I'm, I'm not sure that there's another city.
Right, and there might not be.
Yeah.
But if, if, at the most, there's one. So there'd be 9.25 as the standard for the county.
Correct.
At this instant. I know San Mateo, so just to answer your question, we don't need to go down 20 cities because I know that.
That's, that's my understanding as well.
Okay, so I just, just to...
We're 9.25 currently, all the cities on the peninsula.
As far as I understand it, right. There might be one, there might be a touch higher.
So if we pass and no one else passes, you, you mentioned two cities that have, that San Mateo and which, which was the other?
Pacifica and San Bruno.
Pacifica already did and it failed.
Well, well, Pacifica and San Bruno's did not pass. However, the other city in the area that has one that did pass last year was Campbell, and so they also, they passed a quarter cent, much as San Mateo was considering it their council meeting tonight.
Okay, different county.
San Mateo is, San Mateo is the only one that's considering a quarter cent increase. I'm cutting through all this because that's quite honestly the answer.
San Mateo's the only one.
The only one that's considering a quarter cent this, this November.
Quarter cent, okay.
They wanna put on, whether they'll put it on the ballot.
So they'd be at 9.5 if theirs passes.
They'd be at 9.5. We would have the highest, we would have the highest in the county.
We would have the highest in the county.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
All right. And I'd be curious if staff, now, we, we did the poll, and it's 300 people on each tax, on each tax sampled, utility tax, sales tax. Did staff look at, uh, the results of measures, were they A through F, the propositions that the state put on the ballot recently, and look at the poll results, the, the voter results of those elections?
Well, I'm, I'm aware of those measures, but, but no, it was not part of what our analysis was with respect to putting a measure on the ballot here in San Carlos.
Okay. Sure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weiss, any questions?
No questions.
We have some folks that would like to speak on this issue. this issue. So I'm gonna call your names, and if you would queue up, I would really appreciate it. This is, again, the order that was handed to me by the city clerk, Avon McClure, followed by Pat Bell. We're not gonna be doing that tonight, Ms. McClure. So if you'd like to speak, that'd be fine. Okay, you've spoken, Pat Bell, followed by Pat Potter.
First, I do not want to cut salary and benefits. I think we've done enough of that. I, I think we need to put a revenue measure on the ballot. And if staff isn't prepared to either put a sales tax on the ballot or a UUT on the ballot, shame on us. It has to be done in two weeks, that's because it wasn't done in the last three months. So I don't see that as an argument. I think it's unconscionable to put a sales tax on the ballot that could really hurt our B-to-B businesses in this town. As we know, those, we depend on those heavily, and if we're the highest sales tax in the county, those contractors can drive a few more miles to save. They have, they have the East Palo Alto Home Depot and the San Mateo Home Depot, and we're right in the middle. Anybody, those aren't long drives. With a good education program, we could pass the UUT. It's just, it's just the wrong thing to do to put the sales tax on the ballot, and to do it on the basis of a survey that is so flawed and has made so many people angry who were called and just got so frustrated that, I know one person who just quit in the middle, and they called her back the next day and said, "Well, we've randomized you into the other group, so now you want to answer those questions." Come on, folks. You can't rely on that sort of data to do something this important and do it wrong. You have to do the right thing, and you all know what the right thing is. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Pat Potter, followed by David Crabbe.
Thank you, Pat Potter, San Carlos Green in 135 Manor. I think that his point, his last point there, need for well-managed public education effort and an effective independent campaign is key for either one of those measures. But I also want to point out what he put in his introduction, which was, it is important to note at the outset that voters' opinions about tax measures are often somewhat fluid, especially when the amount of information they initially have about a measure is limited. And quite honestly, there was no information about the utility tax, and you all haven't even figured out what the utility tax is going to be. I naively assumed when you said a utility tax at 5%, it would be 5% of our PG&E bill. And then I understand, well, no, it might be the water bill, it might be the telephone bill, it might be the TV bill. But I can't understand why you would put a survey which is going to determine the future of the city on, without even knowing what the utility tax is going to be. How can you do a survey when not knowing yourselves what the survey is about, or what the utility tax is about? The other thing I want to point out is that, what do you say about San Carlos when you say, "We are the most expensive city to shop in," and to answer, Mr. Grokot, by the Bureau of Equalization, "We would be more expensive than San Francisco, more expensive than anybody else in Santa Clara County or San Mateo County." So what does that say about us? Now, let's take a look at the utility tax. Let's say the utility tax was 5% of your PG&E bill. What does that mean? That means that in this public education program, you go out to the community and say, "Look, here's what we need. Mark Weiss has done a fabulous job explaining the problem, but we need this money, so let's get together, let's talk about how we can reduce our energy consumption." So you have, you have saved yourself your wallet and supported the city. I looked at my PG&E bill, 200 bucks, average PG&E bill. If I've saved 10% of my energy, then I've paid the city $9.50, and I've saved myself 50 cents. And San Carlos Green will support you 100% on this. We will, we will motivate, we have actually started a petition for people to respond back to us of what do they think about the utility tax. Now, that was based on assuming the utility tax was 5% of a PG&E bill. What you guys are gonna come up with as a utility tax seems to be moot, because it seems like you've already determined you're gonna go with this sales tax. And what the sales tax says is that in six years, I'm not gonna be up on that dais, and I don't give a damn what happens, because we are going to be right back where Mark Weiss has put us, not, I'm sorry, Mark, you didn't put us here, but right back where the budget is, because we won't have the revenue in six years. And none of you are gonna be there, Mark might not be there, and I'll wrap it up, and I say that the utility tax is the way to go. San Carlos Green will be behind you 100%. We have 500 members in San Carlos Green. We will mobilize, we will do outreach programs, we'll do whatever it takes to get you to understand that we want to be the city of green living, not the city with the most expensive sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next speaker is David Crabbe, followed by Ron Collins.
Hello, here I am again. If I recall in that little discussion about the survey, both options came in on the 50, over 50% on the first go. I mean, there were differences, but both of them came in over 50%. And that was before people even knew what a utility tax was. So it wasn't like the utility tax came in at 30% and the sales tax was at 60%. So there's, there's real hope that a utility tax with a little bit of education could in fact be, become a viable thing. First, let me clarify, I'm all for some kind of a revenue issue, I'm not arguing against some tax increase. Also, I was not one of the 300 or the 600 that was contacted, and if I had been contacted about a utility tax out of the cold, I probably wouldn't have known how to respond to it either. I probably would have, you know, said, "Yeah, I'll support it, because I'll support whatever the city it is." But I've been educated by San Carlos Green, quite frankly, about what the possibilities are. And their members about saving energy and making it work for the, both the people that save the energy and the city are absolutely, they convinced me that the utility tax is the way to go. And I think maybe our motto is, you know, save money on your utility bills and help support the City of San Carlos, meet their budget. And we can do both, and it's not that difficult, it appears to be anyway, you know, and I wish, I don't know, I assume that she probably has sent you her mathematics on this. If not, I hope that you look at it. But I thought it was quite fascinating that, you know, you can, if you save, you know, 5% on your utility bills, and you, you can end up paying the utility tax, and you come out even. You've saved money on your, or you may even have saved yourself 50 cents, but the city gets the money, you've saved money on utility bills, the City of San Carlos can, can keep the label of being the City of Green, and I think it's a win-win-win for everybody. But it does need the education so that people understand that this is what it's all about. And I'm also obviously against the sales tax because of the, what Matt's saying, you know, whether it be the highest taxed in the county, and that just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever from a business point of view.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crabbe, for your comments. Mr. Collins, followed by Nancy Nagel.
Hi, I'm Ron Collins. When I was on the Planning Commission, I'd read my pack, and I always had my mind made up how I was gonna vote. I came here with my mind made up, and it always got changed. This morning, I was having a conversation with a friend, and he said, "Well, how do you really feel about what we should do?" And I said, "Well, my heart of hearts, I really think that a utility user tax is the best way to go." But as long as we're not voting on that, and we're deciding tonight whether or not to put a sales tax measure on the ballot, my feeling is that because the city is in such dire straits and has been for a long time, that it would be irresponsible not to put it on the ballot. And what I was going to say was that I wanted a 5 to 0 vote, because any person who votes against putting the measure on the ballot basically is saying to me that you don't trust me as a resident of the city to make a decision. Now, having said that, I don't know how you go back from this point and think about doing a utility tax once again. I think it's probably the best thing to do, but at this point, with respect to a sales tax, once it's passed, no one is going to be putting up a sign at the, at the entrance to San Carlos and saying, "Hey, everyone, our sales tax is 5% higher, or half a percent higher than every other city in the county." In addition to that, we have two other cities considering it, and I suspect that if we do a 5% or 5, half-cent sales tax, that other cities will follow suit, and pretty soon, the point will become moot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Nancy Nagel?
Oh, again, Nancy Nagel, I would just like to second the comments of Pat Potter, UUT is the way to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nagel. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter tonight? Okay, Mr. Klein, please fill out a form after you speak, please. Identify yourself when you come up.
Andy Klein, San Carlos. I'm really not gonna weigh on which one you guys should choose. We need a revenue measure, period, and it needs to go on the ballot. And I completely agree with Ron, I believe it should be 5 to 0. By voting against putting a revenue measure on this, you're essentially saying that the voters shouldn't have the right to choose where we get our money from, and I think that's incredibly wrong. But on a side note, I would like you guys to have a discussion about the sunset, decide whether six years is long enough. This is the greatest economic downturn we've had since the Great Depression. We hear, hopefully, we'll be better in six years, but you can't run a city on hope. You need money. So I think six years is a little too quick, maybe eight or 10 years. Just have the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Please come up and fill out a form afterwards, if you would, for the city clerk, it's important. Thank you. Please identify yourself when you come up. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Liz Moore, I'm in San Carlos, and I just wanted to say that I do also support the utility tax for the purposes that, or for the reasons previously discussed in Pat Potter's articulation. And I, I truly do believe that putting a sales tax and being the highest in the county, granted, you know, being first to do such would really drive business away, and granted, people may come in, make their first purchase, once they do that comparison, they're not necessarily going to be coming back. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, our turn. Mr. Lewis?
Well, having been on the subcommittee, I'd like to make comments, but I'd like to hear from some of the other council members first.
Okay.
Before I weigh in, you were in some of the conversations, you know, we've had a hearty debate, but...
Hearty debate. Both of us have discussed this a bit ad nauseam. Mr. Ahmad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need somebody to drive a PowerPoint, if they could. Brian? Mr. Mayor, I prepared some thoughts. One of the issues that is up in front is, this is not a simple issue. I've actually got some props up in front of us here. That mess in front of my seat is actually the packets and binders that I've gotten over the last year. It's a chunk of reading, actually, if you stack it up, it's a little over four feet tall. These are the consequences of the decisions that we make. These have budgetary issues attached to it, and they have real people at the other end who need those services. So if somebody is going to say, "It's simple, just do X," I think it's a disservice to the citizens of San Carlos, and it's, and it's somehow flying in the face of what's sitting in front of you. So I've put some thoughts here. Can we hit the next slide? First of all, I get it, people are mad. They're incredibly ticked, and they've got good reasons to be. We have been cutting, and folks are not happy with where our budget is, and to some extent, where the economy is. Next. There are those among us who love soundbites, so I wanted to address a couple of them up front. One of them is, you know, "I live within my means, why can't you guys?" Next. Here's sort of the big issue, Mr. Mayor, that we get, you know, roughly $9 million for property taxes, about $4 million from sales taxes. Next. I hear this, I don't know about you guys, I've, I've ended up budgeting another half-hour when I buy groceries, because I get stopped. I now go at 8:45, I shouldn't give that away, because the grocery store's about to close, but you hear this, "I pay my taxes, I'm entitled to these services." I pay a lot in taxes, and folks in San Carlos do pay a lot. Next. Here's the challenge. If we look at our firefighters, people that we love, and our police force, that property tax and sales tax does not equate to what we spend. That $14.8 million is in the red, because guess what? It's in the red. Next. There was talk about cuts, that we take away liberty. There's been talk about, well, you don't have to cut, you need to figure out other ways to do it. The issue is that we offer a buffet of services. So what happens next? Unfortunately, the checks do. We have to pay for, there is no such thing as a free lunch, not, especially not when it comes to city services. What are the other things that make up our general fund? We do have fee for services, we have licenses, we have permits, we do have hotel tax, give or take, about 650K. I'm looking at Mr. Malpe, he's giving me a nod. Next. I'm gonna go through this fairly quick. There, there's the soundbite, "Just cut salaries." It's the biggest chunk, "Just cut it." The city manager and a number of folks have come together and said, they put together presentations. I had to look at the data a little bit differently to make sense for me. Next. The ratio I got interested in, I'm not so concerned about how many people we have on staff, but how many citizens does a staff member support? Next. So if you go to Menlo Park, it's about 126. Next. Burlingame, 132. Next. Foster City, 170. Next. Los Gatos, 187. Next. Belmont, 198. Ooh, getting big. Okay, strong, like bull, Los Altos. But they don't compare to us at 249. That's a lot of folks. If you want to say San Carlos employees working in City Hall get to have their feet up and enjoy the day off, I think there's 249 people who are knocking on the door asking for services that may have a different opinion. Next slide. What have we done with salaries? We've talked about this pretty significantly, you can read the grand jury report, I recommend everybody does. Next. As the remarks from everybody on the dais had said, "We can do more, we should." Let's go next. Why can't I live within my means? Next. This is what I'm doing, why can't the city? It makes only sense, you've got so much money coming in, why can't you live within it? Next. This is something that I didn't expect when I first got elected. I, I feel the same way everybody else does, I felt that we should live within our means, and here's what I found out. We don't get to control everything that's in these budget documents. Unfortunately, state and federal government has a different opinion of what they want to do. We have new laws, we have new mandates, we have new regulations, we have new licensing fees that come down upon us, and guess what? Like it or not, we're going to do it. I did put one interesting number here. If you look at the bills that came out of the California Legislature, a little over 3,000 hit the California Assembly in one year, about 1,700 in the California Senate. Each one of these have local implications, which means we're on the hook to spend money. Now, I spent a lot of time in Sacramento, I met the governor, he's a very exciting guy, looks orange, he's kind of like an Oompa Loompa on steroids, but we're, we're at the, you know, we're the, we're the tail. They're, they're gonna wag us as hard as they want to, and we don't get to pick what we want. A lot of these regulations are pretty good. Are we worried about sending pollutants into the bay? Are we worried about better safety for cars? Do we want better pollution controls? All these things are important, but they come with a price tag. Next. One of the big things that we did this year was we did a core services survey. Chief Roethlis is in the office, and I give him full credit for giving birth to the idea, which was, what services are absolutely core that a department provides, and then let's go out. What are sort of really important, then nice to do, then, eh, gee, if we had time, we had a lot of money, and gee, we would do those things. We set up a scoring sheet. Every service that is performed by the city was scored against this. The big thing I want you to see at the top is mandated by law. Next. So what did we do? Here's all of our departments, those are the inboxes. Let's take a look at what the departments do. Next. So the administrative services department, 18 of the 23 services they provide are mandated by law. I'm gonna say it again, 18 of the 23 services are mandated by law. Next. Public Works, 22 of 28. Next. Park and Rec. Ah, a lot of blue. Gee, I wonder where we could actually make cuts if we had to. Next. Police, 8 of 11. Police, 8 of 11. There's, there's nothing that says we have to deal with, uh, youth offenders, or drug intervention programs, or anything else like that. Those are not mandated by law, but you can tell, we've got a police service that is doing as much as they can, and doing what's mandated, and trying to stretch. Next. Fire, absolutely nothing they're doing isn't mandated by law. Next. Community Development, 10 out of the 18 things that they're doing, mandated by law. Next. Planning Department, 7 out of 9. Interesting. Next. Building Department, 12 out of 22. Next. City Manager. Now, it's kind of interesting, he's got a ride herd over every other department, and hopefully keep track of those 3,000 pieces of legislation that are floating around, trying to strangle us. While it's not mandated by law, I think it's pretty darn important. Next. City Council actually does a lot of stuff here. It's not mandated that we actually sit on boards, uh, for something like, uh, the Regional Transit Authority or everything else, but guess what? We do. We're faced with a couple of options. Here's what we are going to do on council. I believe I can speak for where our direction's going to go. We are going to continue to do intelligent things to streamline our system. There are things we can do better, we will always do that. Second one, we need to increase the revenue. We've got a deficit, somehow or another, has to increase revenue. Lastly, there are going to be cuts. Next. Unfortunately, this is where you get hung up in the grocery store. Everybody comes up with puppy dog eyes, or yanking their hair out, saying, "There's no way you can cut me." Here's the deal. A lot of those decisions, and a lot of the easy cuts, the ones that we don't want to do, they're gone. We're now down to the bone. The cuts that are going to happen are the ones that are going to be like this. Next. Mr. Mayor, I want to give voters a choice to do this. Um, that's it for that presentation. What I will tell you is that there are three things we need to be cognizant of. Number one, what we need is a city. Number two, what we want to do. And number three, what we can do. We need the revenue. I will tell you that personally, I want to do a UUT. In terms of what we can do, if we rely exclusively on the survey data, uh, it would say that we can do the sales tax, and we can't do a utility tax. Let me play with this for a moment. I still like the UUT. I believe that it is a more stable source of revenue. One of the things that we have seen is that sales taxes fluctuate. Um, if sales are down, so is our revenues. Utilities tend to be a little bit more stable in terms of their consumption. If we go through a hardcore push and tell people to conserve, that's great, but at least it's something I think we can start to bank on. The other thing I would put to the dais, Mr. Mayor, uh, it's something that Tramitola, and actually, folks on city staff, uh, we, we've done something fairly unique, in that everybody on this dais has run a campaign and won an election. Based on that, one of the things that we also know is that to run a campaign and win an election, you need volunteers, and you need them to be motivated. I have not heard anybody tell me, "My God, a sales tax is the greatest thing, I am so excited to go out and knock on doors." We do, on the other hand, have a motivated force who would go out and volunteer and drive for a UUT. In the case of what we need, which is, we need to pass a revenue measure, I think that is one of the intangibles that is not in the survey, and is a unique point of this dais to say, "This is a critical thing that we need to measure." Lastly, Mr. Mayor, I, I would tell you that, again, I am, I'm interested enough in a UUT. I actually have the ordinance from Menlo Park. This ordinance, uh, was passed in 2006. Uh, it was actually done 5-0. It does have a senior exemption. It is 4% on the utilities, 2.5% on telecommunications. There is a sunset. The way they've done it is that it has to be revisited every two years by the council. That is my push. I will tell you that regardless, I am, I'm going to support a revenue measure, and I will campaign enthusiastically for it. I think I put out my reasons why we need the revenue. I'm going to go door to door to do it. I would like the discussion of what it's going to take to win. I think everybody also does recognize education, no matter what. Uh, a sales tax may have a natural lift to it, but if we sit on the dais, say we're going to put it on the ballot, it will fail. We have to go out there and actively campaign for it. I think with the UUT, there may be, whether folks really care about the revenue or not, they may be interested in, in volunteering and driving the, driving the issue. With those comments, I yield.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ahmad. Mr. Grokot?
Well, I find it interesting to do a presentation. It's the second time I've heard from a council member who has made a presentation or given a speech, seems to have their mind made up before they even heard from the public or, or anybody else. That's troubling, guys. Really is. You're supposed to come here with an open mind. You might have your information-
Until the chair, please don't lecture, fellow council members. Thank you very much. We have respect. Try not to lecture you. If you'd give us the same respect, I'd appreciate it.
I've been lectured before from the dais, so, um-
Let's not make it personal.
Fact is, we are supposed to come here with an open mind. I came here with an open mind, and when I heard about the folks and what they're talking about with utility tax, um, it was convincing to me, what, what Ms. McClure said, and I think Pat's left already, but what Pat Potter said. I've said all along that I don't like the idea of going to the voters with a tax measure. And Mr. Ahmad said, one of your, your points up there was, "Just cut salaries." I want to be clear that I haven't said that, "Just cut salaries." What I have said is, we ought to be doing at least like, um, what San Mateo is doing, which is working in concert with their unions. It's, this is a, from the Daily Journal, "Workers Make Pay Concessions." What it's about is, uh, all the union groups in San Mateo agreeing to, uh, either take cuts, or, uh, if you don't want to call them cuts, at least not take the raises that they were scheduled for, in order to help the city out, in, in meeting its, its budget deficit, to save $1.3 million. We're not there. And I can't go into too much of what's been said in closed session, but we've touched on it, but we're just not there. We, we can't put a headline in the paper like this. And it bothers me that we're not there, because all the way back when we had our council retreat, and we started talking about this, that's what I brought up, was, let's do, that, that we need to educate the voters on our, what kind of pay we, we have, what kind of salary, salaries we have, what kind of benefits we have, retirement benefits, et cetera, and we need to, to talk about holding the line in those areas. Mr. Weiss had a quote in the paper that this is the fiduciary responsibility to promptly address this problem. Well, if that was true, and I believe it is true, wasn't it the fiduciary responsibility of the staff to make recommendations to us, perhaps a little differently, when we were going into labor negotiations? If we knew things were so bad, why are we talking about giving raises and, and increasing things? I know, Mr. Weiss, we made cuts in certain areas, and I know that we've had, uh, created a two-tier system. That's very good. A two-tier system will save us in the future, it doesn't save us now. I also read in the paper about, as the economy drops, paychecks drop weight. Even in San Carlos, I know of business owners who are not taking a salary out of their business because they can't, and they're paying their employees but not taking a salary themselves, because the economy's bad. You think you have a problem at City Hall. I know people who run businesses in this town who are having problems. I'm having a problem with my own business. I'm paying a lot of my expenses out of my savings. I run my own business, I'm paying a lot of my expenses so far this year out of my savings. That's the truth of the economy. Now fundamentally, what we're talking about, guys, is, you know, you go back to basic civics, everybody has a right to their own property and their own money, and we, we all come together, sure, with government to pay for things, and we consent to give a, a little bit away, to run a government to provide us services. The reason I've been talking about some cuts at the salary level, at the benefit level, and so forth, is because, sure, our city workers do a fine job, but they also get paid well. And when I look out into the, into the private sector, I see people not getting raises, actually getting, taking cuts, taking cuts in hours, and so forth, just like this, this article talks about. The other part that I'm concerned about, if we raise taxes anywhere, whether it's a utility tax or a sales tax, you, you have people who, even in this town, are at the breaking point. They may be making it now, but you add something, some weight to them, and now they're going, they're going to be going to government for, for some kind of help. And will the help be there? In the state of California, will the help be there? When you go to a social services program for help? That's what this article's about. When taxes go up, even just a few dollars a day, many people will be forced to make difficult decisions. Yes, we're making difficult decisions at City Hall. Have we made enough difficult decisions? I just don't understand this one-tracked approach, and I guess what I'm hearing tonight is the one-tracked approach is, "We're only prepared for a sales tax, we're not really prepared for a utility tax." I'll close my comments by saying, I, I agree with what was said. Maybe we go out for a, for a tax, but to go out for a sales tax, it's unfair to our businesses, and it's not morally right. We want these services, we want our government in, within the, the boundaries of San Carlos to operate a certain way. We damn well ought to pay for it, and we shouldn't expect people who visit our town to pay our due. If we're going to put a tax on the measure, a, a measure, a tax measure on the ballot, I think it should be a utility tax.
Thank you, Mr. Grokot. Mr. Royce?
I'd like to start off a little bit on a lighter note. I think the survey data was, was, was good. I think the professionals did, did a great job. I think it showed that our citizens are fairly well satisfied in the city of San Carlos. And we're fortunate to have two options, both a sales tax and a utility tax that are over 50%. And, uh, what's more important to me, is people I talk to on the street are very supportive of making an, an investment in, in our city. They, they want to keep this a great place. Uh, that all sounds pretty good. It could be a lot worse in today's time. One of the things that, uh, it's a little different here, that no one's talked about, is we, as, as a council, have decided to create a subcommittee made up of council member Lewis and Mayor Griselli to tackle this issue. They, along with people on staff, along with the consultants, uh, we've asked them to look at a utility, look at a sales tax, look at everything, and come back to council for a recommendation. And we do that quite often. Uh, we divide and conquer. There's a lot of work to be done on council. I'm not complaining about the work, but to be effective and efficient, just like, uh, council member Omar and I worked on the finance committee, a lot of those core requirements and budget process and financial reporting, uh, we worked on over the last six, six months. We've all worked on various subcommittees, and we have brought to council a recommendation. So what's a little different this, this evening is, is we're not here debating whether or not to do a sales tax or a utility tax. We're here with a recommendation from a subcommittee who I think, uh, I know I have a lot of, of trust in their judgment and their experience. Next, council member Matt, they're the next two experienced council member, that doesn't make them good, but they're most experienced, uh, of, of the group. And, uh, and so, uh, I, but I, I do want to just diverge off a two minutes here on the utility tax. I think, uh, Ms. Potter made some excellent points. You know, where, where is all the data? When we show the sales tax rates, why don't we show a page that shows utility tax rates? It shows that 50% of the population in California pays a utility tax. Where's the equal data here? And, and actually, I, I do want to share a gut feel that I have, uh, before the recommendation. I truly think a utility tax is the best long-term solution for San Carlos. I see, or I saw, people deal with gasoline that went from $2 to $5 a gallon, or $6 a gallon. What was it? I can't even remember how high it went. And, and we, as a city, are truly green, we've done a great job, uh, in global warming, in, in recycling, in, in, in all the things that are the right citizenship for, you know, planet Earth. And I truly think the long-term solution for our PG&E and our water, and our, all our telecom, which is, you know, all the phone and TV and internet, and even, you know, sewage and, and, and garbage, all that utility structure, we need to get people's attention on that, and how to conserve. And also, we have a role to try to have them, uh, to try to in, influence their behavior, just like the government does. That's what the government does with taxes. It influences foreign tax credits, and all sorts of things of how investments are, are made. And so, I think the real long-term so, solution, um, is, is that we, we, we on the long-term, maybe not this evening, but longer term, we still need to look at utilities and conservation, and, and maybe even taxes in the future on utility, because I do think that's the best long-term. For this evening's vote, though, we're voting on a sales tax. And what makes a sales tax attractive is the data's there. And, and I'm a data person. I mean, the data is, is clearly, not only that percentage of 61% versus a, a lesser number, but the people who strongly favor a, a sales, a, a, a sales tax, it's, it's also simple, it's easy, because it actually comes from the tax, what do you call it? The tax roll? You know, you basically, it all comes from one place, from the state of Cal, or the county that, that collects that. It does make us the highest nine and three-quarter, you know, rate in the county. It's not, my economics tells me that it's not a good time to stimulate the economy, it's not a time to raise taxes and sales tax. But, uh, when I compare it to, uh, the committee and the complexity of a utility tax, and we're really not prepared already as a city to implement it. It is much more complex in how you define even what utilities are, and how we would tax it, and how we would do a senior exemption for all these miscellaneous bills. It, it gets a little risky, it was, actually showed higher risk, much more, uh, reaction to the polling, both, you know, pros and cons to utility. So the conservative way, and the safest way, is, is to do a sales tax. Again, I'll emphasize, to me, I think we're taking the easy way out a little. However, I agree with your recommendation, it does get the job done, but I truly want the citizens to, to listen to the future, in the future, uh, I'm going to be bringing up utility tax in six, six years from this point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Royce. Mr. Lewis?
Thanks for, everybody for their comments. You know, despite the final recommendation tonight, the debate has been hearty, um, as far as whether it's UUT or sales taxes. Staff and consultants can probably attest, um, it's something that I've really, really struggled with, and Randy, I think you're hitting on something that's, that's interesting. But, um, yeah, everybody has to keep in mind that one of the reasons we have to consider taxes, we get a lower tax rate than everybody else, just about, in the county, with, like, one or two cities from the state. Get lower tax return, we pay the same amount of property taxes, we get a lower return than everybody else in the state. That's the one thing we cannot forget, despite all the mandates that council member Ahmad put out there. We, we just don't have the economic resources. This is just one part of the economic, um, plan. We do have a multi-dimensional attack on this. Secondly, we have to succeed. I don't think there's any doubt in anybody's mind that this, that we need additional revenue, and, and a tax measure has to succeed. And, and, and ultimately, I think we have to use some conservatism in, in how we attack this. And ultimately, I think we have to use some conservatism in how we attack this, because as we've seen tonight, taxes make people angry. As was on, nice slide, by the way, I hope you paid for that image. Three, the city has a history, really, of not supporting taxes, which, again, makes us all feel a little bit more conservative about our recommendations, because we haven't had a lot of luck. I think you could argue we haven't had a lot of great education either, but we haven't had a lot of luck, and I don't think you can deny that. Four, when you talk about the sunset issues, I think one of the reasons sunset get put into tax measures is, A, people like to hear that they're going to end, and B, institutions don't mind putting them in because they're easier to renew than they are to start. And I think that's why the sunset issues exist. For me, in analyzing this, there's, you have to take into consideration the public's support and the overall, what does the public want? What is the public willing to support? And I think that's, that is an overriding issue. I will say, where it comes to sales tax is, keep in mind, 10% of our sales tax base comes from downtown, only 10% of it. Our regional retail is what drives our tax base. We do have regional retail destination, and those folks do use the corridors of San Carlos. Most, every county, if they don't have hotel taxes, there are taxes in every city that rely on outsiders as well as citizens. And once again, you know, it's 50 cents on $100. It's 50 cents on $100. It's, you know, $5 on $1,000. And I think Mayor Griselli may have some more numbers to go in there to be a, being a numbers guy in some of our discussions. I'll leave that for him to get into a little bit deeper. The 61% initial ballot test is significant, and I think the survey's correct. Now, on the UUT, I think most people here that have been here before know how strongly I feel about many of the green, if not most all of the green issues. And I think the education effort is the key. I think the enthusiasm of San Carlos Green and other folks in town that have showed a propensity to support environmental issues has to be factored in. I think it's a really enthusiastic base, and I think any measure could use that level of enthusiasm to get out the vote and be very positive about it. I think it's true that we don't have a well-defined user utility tax, and perhaps that's our fault at this point in time. When I hear PG&E, water, cable, and phone, I personally would like to see cable and phone exchanged with sewer and garbage, because I personally think that if it's going to be a green tax, and I would actually support it more on the basis of being a green tax than I do support, because it's a consumption tax, and we have to reduce our consumption, that the tax has to be designed so that I know as a citizen, how can I can affect that tax rate? And I do believe that government, when they can put out a social goal that's of high principle, that we all can fall in line, and we know how to affect that change, and we think it's the right direction for the world, the city, the community. And there's no doubt that those four items, sewer and garbage, not necessarily for me, cable and phone, have the same impact on our consumption as individuals and citizens. I think that we're going to need, I don't think we need six years to design it, but I think we need more time to design it, and I think the community will support it. But I would point out, and I think Mayor Griselli mentioned this in one of our subcommittee meetings, that it's more often imposed by government than it is voted in by the public. And I do think that makes the, A, user utility, or a green tax inherently more risky. I think it's more principled, and I believe it's the right thing to do in the long run. And I'd love to work toward designing a smart green tax based on our individual consumption. I don't think we're there yet, which is ultimately why I supported this. I also think that it's more difficult, given the utility tax that we've described, PG&E, water, cable, phone, to affect change in any substantial way of 5%. You know, if you have a $200 PG&E bill, it's going to be hard to bring that tax down based on what you spend on average for utilities versus what you spend on average in retail. And Bob, I don't know if you're going to mention some of those things, but I'll leave that. Bob is very articulate in that matter. So it wasn't without, for me, without great internal debate, moral debate, that I came over and said that the first and foremost necessity is for San Carlos to get money to help run the city at the level of character that I think that we've all come to know and want to see continue. I would like to, you know, help in designing a better tax for the future, and is why I support the sunset as it is. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. This is obviously an issue that I think everyone on the dais made some excellent points. But as also has been mentioned, is what's in front of us is a problem. And we're elected to try to solve problems, and if not solve them, in this situation, we're going to give the voters an opportunity to see if they can help us solve the problem, or certainly to alleviate it. It's been mentioned about the difference in cost, utility tax versus sales tax. It is 50 cents on $100. It's $5 on $1,000. It's $10 on $2,000. The example was given by one of the speakers this evening of a $200 PG&E bill. If a 5% tax was applied to that, that would be $10. So that household would have to spend $2,000 in the city of San Carlos to equate the cost. And perhaps that, certain households spend that, maybe more. But I would submit that many households spend far less than $2,000 specifically in the city of San Carlos every month. From a business standpoint, looking at it from my business background, a utility tax is going to be passed on. If a landlord has a utility tax on the property that they own, that's coming off the bottom line of what they make. They're going to pass that on to the lesssee, person who's leasing their property, if it's a business, and that business is now, has a bottom line that's impacted, and they're going to pass that on to the consumer. A sales tax is a pass-through. It's been said that we'll have the highest tax on the peninsula, and we might for a while, although I tend to believe that the other cities will be coming along with us on this. But even if they didn't, for, it's been said about B&amp;B, Ms. Bell mentioned, if some contractor was going to spend $1,000 at the Home Depot, would they drive to San Mateo, Foster City, wherever that Home Depot is over there, for the $5 difference? I'm not sure. When the gas was high last year, I can almost bet they wouldn't be driving over there. An issue with the utility taxes, we can't control the utilities. PG&E, let's assume again that we would cut our usage 5%. Let's say a utility tax, let's say, or pardon me, utility, we spent $200, and let's say we could cut our costs 5% to 10%. And therefore, it would be good for the green situation and the environment. We'd be paying less and helping the environment. And PG&E turns around and raises our rates 10%, where are we? Or the cable company raises their rates 5%. Or the water company decides, because we're doing such a good job of not using water, and this has happened before and will happen again, that they raise the rates to make up for it. It's a difficult issue, and it requires, as been mentioned on the dais, a great deal of education and a great deal of information given to folks about all the details. Mr. Lewis did mention what I had talked about in our subcommittee relative to whether governments or whether citizens have voted for green taxes. And I think, and again, maybe this is something that, it's intuitive to me, but most of the taxes that I've seen have been imposed by city councils, or states, or federals, or the federal government, as opposed to directly folks voting for a green tax. And that's to say that there haven't been some, and there will be more. And I think that is the future, and I would agree with many people on the dais that this is the area that we should be pushing forward. But we have to get some revenue into this city. And quite honestly, from a sales tax standpoint, even though it was mentioned on other, some of the speakers said that other people don't pay or shouldn't have to pay for coming into our city and pay a tax, there's a sales tax in every city. So if we go to San Mateo, maybe it's not as high as ours, but we're contributing to San Mateo's budget, and we're contributing to Belmont's budget, as they are when they come to ours. So that argument, to me, is a bit spurious in that I believe that we're all sort of working together in one sense, spending our money in wherever we're spending it. I've looked at this thing from a lot of those directions that I mentioned. I have to honestly say, we have a problem that we need to fix and solve. I think the citizens will step up and vote for a proper, educated tax if they understand where the money's going for. I've said for a long time, government does a poor job of telling people where their money goes, alluding to Mr. Grokot's points of more education. There's no question about it. Folks don't know where their dollars go, even today, and we've got to do a better job. To pass any kind of a tax, we're going to have to do a marvelous job of educating folks to do this. So I stand by the, in closing, I stand by the recommendation of the subcommittee. I believe we need a tax to be passed. I believe the survey shows that our best chance is to get a sales tax, and that's where I'm going to be standing on this evening. So, gentlemen, I'd like to hear a motion if there is one, or, and then we can discuss some other comments after that.
Mr. Mayor, I actually did have a couple of questions.
Okay.
To Mr. Rubens. There's been a point on the council, talking about green taxes, or some taxes being imposed and other taxes being voted upon. I know that the council has set rates for sewage, for garbage, et cetera, those go to dedicated funds. When we look at PG&E, when we look at other utilities that do have right-of-way within our city, what is the ability of the city council to impose fees?
You're talking about franchise fees for different utilities, the cable company. When we have a franchise, we can impose the fee. Sometimes it's regulated by a higher level of government, like cable, 5% fee is the franchise fee. Sometimes it's negotiated with the organization. Sometimes you, like you did recently, you set the franchise fee a little lower than you can, such as with the garbage rates recently. In this case, a utility users' tax is something that you can impose on top of the franchise fee for those utilities. Because it's not a franchise fee that's going to the city, it is like a pass-through tax. It's just an additional tax that goes on top of it. I don't know if Brian has anything else to add to that.
I was going to add a couple of points to what the city attorney said. First of all, the council mayor may not be aware that prior to a state constitutional amendment several years ago, it used to be the case that city councils could directly pass a utilities or tax. That explains why many of the cities in this county, you know, places like Redwood City, Daly City, et cetera, that have utility taxes, in most cases impose them before there was a voter requirement than now. And I know Charles from Tramadol is still in the audience, and he may wish to opine on this as well, but in our research, both last year and this year, what we found, and we talked to San Mateo, and we talked to Pacific, other people who also did polls, is we saw in just about every city we looked at, the utility user tax was significantly polled below the sales tax. Now, the other thing to know about franchises, I think you were asking about PG&E. PG&E is a bit unique because they have, I guess what one could call, a permanent franchise, that it has no expiration date, and it's at a relatively low percent, I believe it's 1% or something like that. Cable TV used to be typically a 10% or 15% franchise we could renew. However, as of, as Mr. Rubens knows, working with me at SAMCAT, a couple of years ago, the state changed that, so we no longer have the ability to set a local franchise. So what's happening over time is the, both the amount of franchise, local franchises the city can charge, and also the number of utilities we can impose upon is ever shrinking. And I think it gets to Councilmember Ahmad's slide about the new rules and regulation and law. You know, obviously, whenever a utility or telecom company can preempt a city from imposing something like that, they do. And indeed, some of the newer technologies, such as DBS, the direct satellites, those are preempted, there's no possible franchise. So a lot of what we can or can't charge in those areas is set by state and federal law.
So just to, because I want to be clear on this point, when, it seems like the opportunity for the dais to impose a green tax by fees or franchises is shrinking by the day as the state acquires more revenue sources.
I would say it probably is fairer to say that certainly the, your opportunities to impose franchises on those industries is shrinking. I think in terms of posing some form of utility user tax is still there, although, as we indicated earlier, just like the sales tax, you do have to go to the voters. I think, also to comment on some of the comments I heard from the dais, you know, last year when we described the utility user tax, and when we described it this year, both in our PowerPoints and in the staff report, we've always said that it covers gas, and electric, and cable, and phone, and cellular. We've never changed the description, so it's kind of fascinating to me to hear tonight people saying it isn't clear to them. In our discussions with cities who have utility user taxes, we have talked to Fremont, Menlo Park, Hayward, a number of cities who have both older ones and new ones. They will tell you at the staff level that that's the hardest part of campaigning for those measures, is explaining to people, even if you list the categories, how it works. The same is true with the exemption discussion. In most cases, by the way, what we learned in our research this, last year and this year, is exemptions don't tend, for example, to cover a group like seniors, but rather they tend to follow income levels. So it's more typical in the city to allow an exemption for low-income folks, not necessarily seniors as a group. But even that's challenging, because the question becomes, how do you determine who's low-income? There is a standard that most cities use of using the PG&E, the so-called care rates, which are people who are on the lifeline service. But in other cities, for example, in Hayward, one has to submit an annual income tax return to prove that they're qualified. I think in a smaller city like this, administratively, that would be very challenging. And then finally, as Mr. Weiss could tell you, some of the phone calls that we've received recently about, as soon as there was talk about a senior exemption, is we actually did hear from small businesses who want to know if they could get an exemption. So the exemption discussion also from utility user tax gets very involved quickly. And I think to Mr. Weiss's earlier point, if that is a direction the council wants to go, obviously, we need to get some pretty clear direction from you as to what areas you would or would not be inclined to entertain exemptions.
Mr. Mayor, I'll offer a motion for the purposes of discussion. I'd like to move to continue this item to the next meeting with the direction to staff to prepare an ordinance for a user utility tax.
Just a motion, I'll force your second.
I'll second it, because I'd like to look at it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on this issue?
Mr. Mayor, again, what I've got in front of me is a Menlo Park ordinance. Again, one of the things I would push for, ignoring, you know, the obvious benefits on the green side, what I do like is that there is a dedicated group that wants to push for this, and any campaign of this type is going to be tough. I would like to enroll them, and, you know, enthusiastic people out there knocking doors and having coffees makes a difference.
Okay, any other comments? All the question, Ms. Boland?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
No.
Mayor Griselli?
No.
Okay. Motion fails.
Let me see, we're going to 10B? What's our number, 10C?
It's this one. Did you get the update?
Double check. That's the sound. Think so. I'd like to move that we consider resolution of staffs on November 3, 2009, as a date for municipal election on a proposed ballot measure, one-half cents transactions- for municipal election on a proposed ballot measure, one-half cents transactions and use tax for general fund purposes, and ordinance adding Chapter 3.38, transactions and use tax, to San Carlos municipal code.
I'll second that.
It's moved and seconded to, for Mr. Lewis's motion, further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment. I'd like to amend the sunset on this resolution from six to eight years.
Could we get a little feedback on how that might affect the measure from our consultant? Is that through the chair?
Sure.
Or we do need a second for the discussion, don't we?
Well, I'd still like to...
It's an amendment, so it's a proposed amendment.
It's a proposed amendment. The motion, the maker has to go along with it.
No, he does not. I'll refer to the city attorney on this one.
Well, I have my parliamentary procedures here in front of me, and a motion can be amended by a motion that's seconded, and then that goes up for discussion. And then if that motion fails, then you go back to the original.
So he made a motion, he wants to make it eight years, right?
Correct. And to discuss, I need...
We need a second for that.
I'll make a second. I'd like to hear the discussion of the eight versus six.
Here, you take this. Okay, Charles. Now we can ask the question.
Thank you. Charles Heath, I'm Vice President of Tramitola. You know, as I think Tim indicated, it's hard to assign a specific percentage differential that you might see from adjusting the duration by a factor of a couple of years. As Dr. McClarny mentioned, we don't tend to see a whole lot of sensitivity around the duration, in particular unless an opposition campaign tends to focus on that and make it an issue for voters. I think that, given the margin of support that we're seeing for the sales tax, if we're talking about a sales tax here above the simple majority requirement, that you could increase that from six years to eight years without putting that measure in jeopardy.
Can I just add through the chair, just as a point of information? Last year, when we surveyed this measure, we actually surveyed it with a sunset of 10 years. And the survey format was a little different. This year, it was done as one of the positive arguments. Last year, it was done very similar to the question you saw about the senior exemption. And last year, that was the last question, and the difference was a sales tax last year ended up at 62%, and if I remember this correctly, with the 10-year sunset, it ended at 66%. So to Dr. McClarny's earlier comment about if you focus attention on a specific feature, you get three or four points, that's exactly what happened. The sunset did, in fact, add four points.
Just curious why you made the amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, to answer that question, one of the things that, A, I'd like the comment that there is somewhat of an insensitivity to the duration, but number two, government moves slow, and what we're putting our marbles on the table for is that we're going to have an economic recovery in six years, and that our city government will have caught up by that point and be in a position where, okay, maybe we can talk about sunsetting, maybe we can talk about something else. Whether there are other revenue measures addressed, which I think it seems that there is support on the dais to do that, what I'd like to do is, let's put this, slam it, get it out of our way, and give the city appropriate breathing time before we have to, you know, six years, it's going to go like that, and we're going to be looking at, oh, gosh, we got to do this again. I'd like some breathing room on this.
Yeah, you know, just to argue rhetorically with you, you know, it sort of pushes against what Councilmember Roy said, and sort of what I'm, I don't know, what I'm sort of in the back of my mind. We need this right now, but it's, we can get to the next one sooner. And if we make it eight years, it's going to be two more years. And I realize your point, but I, I'm not sure that I, you know, concur with it. It doesn't put any, it doesn't put any push to us to, well, we got two more years. We got eight years now instead of six. I mean, I'm just making a rhetorical argument back to you.
Understood. I would also, again, in the spirit of the rhetoric, I would make the argument that having a tax does not mean that this is exclusive. We are going to have additional needs. I've got every confidence that Sacramento and DC are going to give us more mandates to deal with, so this is not going to be a unique moment in time. But again, that's my motion.
Okay. So we vote on that one first?
Correct.
Any more discussion on the eight years?
Yeah, again, I just, again, emphasize, I'd like to move in and out of sales tax as quickly as we can, and still feel, I think, six years is adequate.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question, Ms. Boland. This is to amend Mr. Lewis's motion to eight years sunset.
Got it. Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
No.
Mayor Griselli?
No.
Okay. So now the original motion is on the table?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Before we vote, Ms. Boland, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that, any other comments or questions? I want to make sure everybody has a chance to think about this. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Boland.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear Mr. Ahmad's vote.
I said yes.
Okay.
He was first, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. So motion passes four to one. So we'll be putting that, staff will be getting that together so we can work on how that's going to go on the ballot.
We will implement that.
All right. We have a couple more items to go through. Folks, we'd like to leave, we give a few seconds for that. Okay, the next item is item 10D, consideration of approving the plan proposed by the California High-Speed Rail Authority and by Caltrain for outreach in the San Carlos community regarding the proposed high-speed rail project. Mr. Wild.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to be brief. We're in the first six months of a three-year EIR process on the high-speed rail, and so far, so good. All of the scoping comments that have been made from San Carlos have been acknowledged and addressed by the High-Speed Rail Authority in their scoping report. The next phase of this project will be critical, this process, which is the outreach to the community. They'll be doing something called an alternatives analysis, and they'll be doing that in two phases. And it's a chance for the community to learn about the project in more detail than we had when the scoping comments were due. And it's also a chance for the High-Speed Rail Authority and Caltrain to hear from the community what they think about the project. And so the team that we're working with from the High-Speed Rail Authority and Caltrain has committed to meet with interested community groups and to hold a community-wide meeting in San Carlos. They'll be coming to the Hot Harvest Night booth with me and handing out brochures, and they'll be providing quarterly reports to the city council. So it's a comprehensive approach. We've worked really closely with their staff to put this together, and Assistant City Manager Mora had a lot of good comments on it. And so I would recommend approval of it, subject to any comments the council may have, that things we might have missed, that opportunities that you see that we might...
All right, Mr. Wild, thank you. Questions, Mr. Ahmad, or comments? Okay, Ms. Grocott?
I just had one, because you mentioned that presentation would be made at these alternative projects. Is that correct?
It's an alternatives analysis, which is, that we're looking at alternatives defined, meaning vertical alignment, above grade, below grade. I'm not sure I can name them all here, but it is listed. Tunneling, trenching, at-grade, above-grade, and no build are the alternatives they'll be looking at. Now, in San Carlos, we don't know how that's going to affect the current above-grade embankment. As an engineer, I would say probably they'll work with what they've got here.
So we don't know?
We don't know. But that's what we'll find out in the process.
So we don't, do we know if it will impact the overpasses at Holly and Britton and Harbor in terms of width? Will those things, will those have to be reconstructed? And also, I know, you know, Bob and I have sat on the committee to look at, well, the housing project, or mixed-use project, actually. And we keep getting confirmation, if you will, with no backup material, but just confirmation from the JPB that high-speed rail will fit in the right-of-way and no problem to build a mixed-use project. Any comment on that?
Well, what I can tell you is that the...
It relates to the EIR?
I've looked at the grade separation plans, and they contemplated a third rail. The third rail would have come to the west from where the two rails are now. So it was designed to be expanded in our direction from the embankment. And that would have, it would require widening the over crossings, but the over crossings were designed with that in mind. Now, I penciled out and put a fourth rail on that to see, do we still have clearance problems? It looks, do we have clearance problems as a result of that? It doesn't, it doesn't look like we do. It's still like a 15-foot clearance.
When you say, you're talking about vertical clearance, which was an issue on one of our, I think it was Howard...
I brought it up as something I want them to check.
Okay, good.
Paper to me, by pencil at least, it looks okay. Now, on the Transit Village, the little more information that the High-Speed Rail engineering staff put out is that they can fit four rails in a 100-foot right-of-way. And we have a 100-foot right-of-way in San Carlos, and it's a straight right-of-way.
As in like a passing track for a fourth rail? You know, park the way, is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry, I don't follow you.
One of the things we were also told with high-speed rail is that, about a passing track. In other words, where you pull a train in, you park it essentially for five seconds, and the high-speed rail goes by, and then the other train moves back on the track.
The configuration, as I understand it, at least through San Carlos, would be four rails, or Caltrain would be on the outer tube, and the high-speed rail would be on the inner tube, and there's not a passing track.
All right, okay.
So 100-foot right-of-way, the four rails can fit in that. I think that it may require the project go to a vertical embankment rather than a sloped embankment. But with the Transit Village, you'd have, what you'd see from the street would be the Transit Village and not the vertical walls. So it wouldn't, you know, when you take those two projects in combination, it wouldn't be so much of a visual...
So which would be presented in this EIR? Four-track or three-track? Do we know?
They've discussed a four-track project.
With vertical walls?
They haven't gotten to that detail. That's what we'll see as we go through this alternatives analysis.
Okay.
So Lewis, any questions? Mr. Wild?
I don't know if this is actually exactly on point, but let me ask anyway and see if it's to be sidelined, which is, are we going to, other than us doing outreach and having meetings like we typically do, and have interested users come and ask questions, is there any, I guess, at the end of the day, what I'm interested in from a San Carlos perspective, is how many San Carlos users, you know, are there going to be at the high-speed rail project? Is there, so, you know, maybe it's not at this phase, but is there going to be any polling, or is there any way that we can sort of get a sense for, you know, San Carlos interest in high-speed rail? And when we think about community outreach, I think, oh, good, that should be in that plan, some way we get that feedback.
That'd be a question for Mr. Garvey, I think, more than me. Mr. Garvey is a former city manager of San Carlos.
Mr. Garvey, can you answer that question?
About this.
Would you like to, or not?
He's awake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and let me introduce myself for the record. My name is Michael Garvey, and I am under contract to work on the community outreach and to encourage public input to the planning of the high-speed rail between San Jose and San Francisco. To give you a quick background, the High-Speed Rail Authority, based in Sacramento, did win a bond election in November and have begun the detailed work on the planning. And they broke the state into eight segments, one of which is San Francisco to San Jose, and then they had competitive process to hire engineering firms to do the preliminary planning and design work, and also the environmental impact report for each of the segments. The successful bidder in, or successful competitor in our segment was HNTB, a very large worldwide engineering firm. They're running this out of their office in Oakland. They also have a lot of experience with Caltrain, so it made it a pretty good combination. Shortly after they began their work, Caltrain and the High-Speed Rail Authority entered into a memorandum of understanding to coordinate the planning for the two efforts as closely as is possible, because they do have certain common goals. Electrification and increased number of grade separations are good examples. High-speed rail will require that every at-grade crossing be eliminated, and the Caltrain would like to do that, but that's not essential for their improved efficiencies. And to answer a question that Councilmember Grocott had, when you run high-speed rail, they must be on dedicated tracks. You're not allowed, under federal regulation, to blend them. I think where some confusion comes in is that we currently have a hybrid system called the baby bullet, which has a limited number of passing rails along the peninsula. That can continue, but those are trains that are not going at high speed. This train will go 220 miles an hour through the rural areas, the straightaways, and will go, I think they're talking 150 or 160 miles on the peninsula. Forgive me, I may not be exactly right. The question I am asked frequently is what's it going to look like? And you probably have read in the papers that people farther south in our county are very anxious under the assumption it's going to be a raised berm. And I can't tell you what alternatives will be considered, because they're not finished with that yet. The firm doing it is PBS&J, a very well-regarded planning firm. They did, in fact, do the environmental work for the grade separations that we built here in San Carlos and in Belmont some years ago. And in fact, the lead planner is the same person, so they do understand the rail issues. I would offer speculation, except I wouldn't want anyone to think that it's any formal statement, but basically, you could raise the rail, or you could lower the streets, or you could raise the streets and lower the rail, you could do a tunnel, or you could do a raised berm. What they've got to do is come up with a limited number of alternatives that could be used to extrapolate the impact of the actual design that ultimately is the preferred alternative. And also, another alternative, of course, as you know from your experience with EIRs, is the alternative not to build the project at all. And so they're also studying the impact of not building the project. So that's where we are. Some people have asked if we are advocating for the project, and the answer is no. We're advocating for public input and community outreach to encourage a lot of involvement with all of the alternatives and the careful evaluation that'll be given. A few months from now, they'll be issuing drafts of the alternatives, and we will make those public, and then we'll really get deep into the public input process. Between now and then, I'm afraid it's more emotion than factual. Now, with that as backdrop, there is a great concern that Caltrain not be affected. In fact, the MOU states that Caltrain will not be impacted, it will continue operation. It may be impacted, but it will continue operation. And the only surveying that I know that is assured is contained in the MOU, which is that the Caltrain riders will be surveyed to get their feelings about the project. Other than that, the surveying that has been done about who would use the high-speed rail has been done on a larger basis and not done community by community. And obviously, if you don't talk about how much it will cost, or what the negative impacts could be, the support is very, very high. If you please answer any other questions you may have.
Go ahead, Ms. Grocott.
Couple of questions. When you say no project, does that include segmentation? In other words, you mentioned that San Francisco to San Jose is one of the segments, so could a project alternative be no project from San Jose north? The terminus would be San Jose. And the second question is related, have they determined necessarily what the terminus is in the north?
The answer to your first question is yes. The no-build alternative would refer only to this segment. And in fact, there's been some conversation, and it's being tested, I think, on a statewide basis, about stopping high-speed rail in San Jose and asking people to transfer to Caltrain for the rest of the trip. That appears to have been evaluated in the EIR that was done as a basis for the November ballot issue, and they opted not to do that in their master plan. I don't know the details, but that will be evaluated. The essence of the no-build option for this segment is stopping in San Jose.
Okay.
Your second question is, where would it be terminated? The goal still is to terminate it at the Transbay Terminal, the new... to terminate it at the, at the Transbay Terminal, the new Transbay Terminal that will be built in San Francisco. But you may have heard that the, some, there's a debate as to how mu, how many platforms are needed at the Transbay Terminal ultimately. Those who are more optimistic are urging that the plans be altered to add more, what they call them boxes, because they're undergrounded, that's where the train would pull in. And those who are responsible for building the Transbay Terminal think that there's enough as, as, as it stands. They are in negotiations over that, and it looks like they have a settlement where they're ready to come up with a, a system that should work. But I don't have the information yet. The goal is to terminate at the Transbay Terminal. The fallback position could be to have some train stop at Fourth and Townsend.
Thank you. All right.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Since I get to ask Mr. Garvey, this is exciting. Since
Exciting for you. Think of me. I'm thrilled.
You know about the berms. Councilmember Grocott made a, asked a question about the grade crossing at Harbor. And I had always been under the impression that was Belmont property. Is that Belmont or San Carlos?
It's in, it's in Belmont, but all five were built by San Carlos engineers.
So, any retrofit or change to that structure would be whose issue?
Caltrain or the High Speed Rail Authority.
Okay.
The cities won't be asked to bury any expense in this project.
Actually, if, I'm sorry, if I said Harbor, I meant Howard. So.
Okay, thank you.
Anyways.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Garvey. Appreciate it.
It's a pleasure. It's a thrill to be back.
Mr. May I move for the approval of the outreach plan?
Sir, a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Okay, we have one more item on our agenda. 7H, which is adopting resolution authorized the contract for economic development, marketing services, North Star Destination Strategies, that it costs not to exceed $89,000. That money would be coming out of the redevelopment agency.
Blah, 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 boo.
Mr. Sewick?
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Agency Board. This item is to authorize approval of a contract with North Star Destination Strategies to do marketing services, branding, economic development. It's part of the economic development strategy. The Economic Development Partnership and EDAC had, had brought this forward previously. We created a selection committee. We looked at 14 proposals, interviewed five firms. The decision was to go with two firms, although only engage in one contract at this time for a first phase of doing marketing research and branding identity. And with that information, we could then go ahead and implement with the second firm, which would be a local firm. The firm that we're asking to engage in now is a national firm. They've done this in over 90 cities. They appear to have a very good product. They were very impressive to the selection committee. We thought their price was very reasonable. And what we're interested in doing is actually getting a cohesive branding identity and message, not just a logo, but a message that we can use to build off of for the future and use that to attract businesses, retain businesses, and attract consumers. And do that, you know, we're talking a lot about cuts in services and raising tax revenue. This is what I'd like to call Option E, economic development. It's long-term. It's going to help us improve our fiscal condition. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sewick. Mr. Grocott, you pull this. Do you have questions?
Yeah, I'm throwing all at you at the same time. The reason I pulled this is, I would like to hear a little bit more about what is the deliverable. Because, and what made me think of that when I read the, the staff report was the part where, under EDAC's motion and discussion, do we need this? So, I'm wondering, what, I would like a little bit more detail on what is the deliverable. And then, once we have the deliverable, what's, what's the result of it? How do we use it? What, what's the use of it? And my third question is, meanwhile, you know, we, we talked about a branding idea when Mr. Weiss was first hired as city manager, because he brought it to us as an idea in his interview. And I think that was sort of the get-going on this was, was the result of Mr. Weiss bringing it up. And so, it's been that many years. And meanwhile, the market moves forward. And for instance, The Chronicle just did an article in, I think it was our lifestyle section, on the city of San Carlos and our restaurants. And we're becoming known for Laurel Street and the restaurants. And that can be a good thing, or that can be a bad thing. I had comments out on the street today where people said, how many more restaurants are we going to build? And what's it going, you know, the, the shops that we're losing, where these restaurants are going in, is reducing the, the complexity or the, you know, the options for shopping, at least on Laurel Street in San Carlos. So, circling back on the deliverable, do we do, does the deliverable do anything about that? Do we, do we then look at, you know, I hate to control the market this way myself, but, you know, do we do anything to say about restaurants? So, we don't want any more, or we put ordinances in place that, you know, require there be so many storefronts before you have another restaurant or whatever. So, those are my questions.
And I'd like to introduce Don McCann is here with us. He's the CEO of North Star Destination Strategies and could talk a lot more specifically about the, the deliverable and what's in it. But what we would be getting is actually a lot of valuable research about not only who we are, but how our community resonates with potential consumers and businesses. They will come up with some creative concepts that we can choose to use or tweak, and that would be decided by the, the local implementing firm about how exactly to use that.
That would be Look, that was mentioned.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Um, how it would be used, the intention would be to use it for the various segments that we're trying to work with. We had a draft marketing strategy that identified, you know, wanting to build our, our, our construction materials and supply businesses as, as one sector. We want, we want a unified campaign to identify San Carlos, to have a compelling, cohesive, consistent message across all platforms. All departments would use it. The Chamber would use it. We would use it for different segments, downtown businesses, if we want to market our restaurants, if we want to do anything with it. We can decide that later. What we want to have is something that's a unified message that really represents San Carlos. And this is basically research that helps us get to that point. It also gives us a lot of ideas about strategy that we don't already have, because we're using somebody from the outside that can objectively look at our community versus just our, you know, the, the partnership has already come up with a draft strategy. We just realized we need a, we need an outside professional to kind of test our theories.
If it would be okay with the, with the mayor, I would like to hear a little bit of past experiences of some cities. I want to know what we're getting for, I think it's about $89,000 plus whatever we're going to pay Look. And granted, this is not general fund money. It's redevelopment money, but it's, you know, it's our money, none, all the same.
Just, just to let you know, we normally close at 10:30. So.
I'll keep it brief.
All bullet points. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Pleased to be here and looking forward to working with San Carlos. This is about being more competitive. It is understanding your community. It's a holistic approach that brings in a great deal of research from within as well as from without perceptions and beliefs about San Carlos. You know, we look at a competitive set. All of these different 18 pieces of research then take us to a strategic proposition, and we get approval of that strategy first. And then that helps direct decisions that are made on some of the questions you've had about policy, or development stances, or creative. Everything then can tether back to that strategy. And then, it's also allows you not just to get your own city communications integrated, but also to get other public organizations and private sector, not necessarily using the same logo, but connecting back to that same strategy. And that strategy lets you get it off the page, so it's not just promotion, but it's activity, it's initiatives. It affects someone's experience with San Carlos. And we've had wonderful results. We've enjoyed, this is all that we do. We do a limited number of these each year.
Can you, I'm a very graphics and sort of picture person. So, when you describe something to me, it helps me understand. Can you give, you know, within a few minutes, a description or an example of something that's been done at another city? How they were just floundering around, and then this was done, and now they're, you know?
Sure, sure.
Did you, you got this, right?
Yeah, but I, yeah.
There's a lot, there's a lot of detailing, yeah.
Santa Rosa, California. This was an effort with the City, Chamber, Economic Development, and Tourism and the Downtown Group. Those five entities wanted an integrated brand for the community. Significant amount of research was done. To make a long story short, the strategy came back to the idea of celebrating the harvest. Good bit of the research talked about the people of Santa Rosa were fairly critical of Santa Rosa. When compared to San Francisco, it paled in a lot of ways. When compared as a charming hamlet to some of the other small communities, it was suffering. People told us, Santa Rosa is where you go to buy your underwear. That it was the business center. But it was also where you went to celebrate, that the place where the harvest was celebrated. So, that was basically the strategy. I'm paraphrasing. That was the strategy that was approved by the five groups. Now, how that strategy where the celebrate, where the harvest is celebrated is used by economic development is a little different than how it's used by tourism, is a little different than how the city wields it and the downtown. But it's all integrated. It all connects back to that thought. And so, it's not only affected their communications, but it also affects activity. They've now co-branding with the Redwood Empire Food Bank to have the largest food bank in the world, which is perfectly connected back to that strategy. The business recruitment has done wonders with it. So, they've done a wonderful job of taking that thought and putting it to work. Now, there was some back-and-forth about the logo and who used what, but what they wound up with was an integrated logo. You could tell it was all coming from the same community, and they all worked well together, and it was heartening, harkening back to that same idea.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments. I hope that's all right, just because I looked through all the examples, and I, and I thought it was a lot of really great work. Actually, it was very impressive. And I've been in, some involved in graphics business for over 25 years. You know, I thought what you guys did really well was sort of derive an essential message and then back that up in both the graphic and, in the sort of a local culture angle, which I think we could really use, because I think we have a great, you know, we're sort of like a hidden secret in the peninsula, and I think it's not so good for the businesses for us to be too hidden. So, it's really promising, the work that you all do. I think that the graphics, the color, the photographic execution, and the font, when they all work really well, you've got some examples in here that are phenomenal, and some that are stronger than others. I think color is something that you guys really emphasize. And I think San Carlos, we've typically used, I think, a yellow and a green or something like that. And I, for one, would like to see that revisited. But I think people closely align with color. And, and so, I think that that's, that is an exciting change. I think branding is important. I think people relate to it and they're, you know, they're proud of it. And I think we have, we have a jumble of, of graphics here, and each one individually might be well-executed, whether it's Hometown Days, the SC hat that was successful, what the Chamber does, some different organizations. But, but it hasn't been unified. I think if we do something really well, people can get behind it. I think the color that you guys used has shown great variety. Santa Rosa is a cornucopia of color on one end, but it, but it was, it worked really nicely together. And on the other end, you've got Providence. And I thought that that was a limited palette, but really effective and reflected the community, which was great. I, you know, I just get particular sometimes the way the colors you used and the actual photographs that relate to the color. And I think there's some of the campaigns that were stronger than others. And I'd be happy to offer up some more detailed feedback if anybody's interested. But I think it's a careful choice to make on how the photos, the color actually in the photos, the colors, the graphics, and then the attitude the models take. I also think you had more success than others in some of the model shots with some of the actors. So, I'd love to get more detailed feedback, when it's not going to take up everybody's time. But, but I think you've got some beautiful work in here. I think we need to be careful not to be too conservative and, and not too hip. You know, like the hubbub.com campaign is probably not a direction that's for us, and I'm sure you wouldn't necessarily say that. And also, like the Columbus, Georgia, or the Warrensburg stuff is probably too conservative for us to have sort of a cutting-edge message here. So, I don't think both ends are right, but it seems like you guys are a great firm to find the middle. And we're in the middle of the peninsula, and we need a great message. And so, I was excited by the work.
Through the chair.
Yes.
With all that Mr. Lewis has said, it does, and from reading the report, raises the question a little bit about, you know, we're going to have this firm do part of the work, and then we're going to hand over the baton, have the baton handed over to Look. And if staff might address that a little bit, why we are doing that and not going all the way through necessarily with one firm.
North Star doesn't do implementation. They actually do hand off this in all their client cities. There's, there's a second step that we, we have the option of considering, where they work on marketing strategies. And again, it's really just to point the direction to city staff and a local implementing firm. So, we need somebody to actually execute on it. The, the question, however, is at what point do we take the creative concepts that North Star provides us and just run with them? Or do we want to have the local firm tweak them, or, you know, just use them as ideas to, to create something else? And I think we'll, we'll learn that when we get into the process at that, at that point, what we want to do.
Just to contribute to that point, I think Matt's really right. We, you know, we should have an architecture for where we think this is going. I mean, when you look what they did for a city like Lancaster, what a beautiful branding campaign for a city that, you know, that blue sky and the tie-up is so clean and beautiful, and it really highlights one of the few positives in that area of the country. But I think Matt's right, you know, I think if we do it, or spend a lot of money for it, we should use it. And I think the work in here is really good. It should go on the website. Everybody, we should encourage our organizations to pick it up and run with it. And I think it can be a differentiator. But I think we, we shouldn't, I don't think we should be too soft about implementation if we're going to go with this. I think we should get it, get it right, and tell everybody we want to use it everywhere. I mean, that's the point of branding, is have an edge.
And that, quite frankly, is the point I ask in my questions, because I've seen us do things sometimes, and you put it on the shelf, and that's it. So, very good.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for your input.
I will approve of the item and to move on, unless I think Mr. Royce had.
No, okay. Actually, you covered, last question was great.
All right, very good.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to adopt a resolution. Do we need to read the resolution? Okay. Roll call, please.
Director Ahmad?
Yes.
Director Grocott?
Yes.
Director Lewis?
Yes.
Director Royce?
Yes.
And Chair Griselli.
Thank you, yes. All right. Anything else, gentlemen? All right, meaning adjourned. Thank you.
For an RGP guy, you speak CMYK pretty well.